Good evening. We'll call this regular meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022 to order at 4:47 PM. Maricela, roll call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Here.
Director Daniels?
Present.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Loma?
Yeah.
Director Mal Pakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So we have full attendance today. Six board directors are here in person, and Director Loma is joining us virtually. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Ott, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I moved that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing item F1, Contract Awards, as there are no contract awards.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Maricela, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The motion has been adopted, and the agenda has been adopted. So today, we do have executive session for about 30 minutes or so. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
I can. I move that the Board of Education convene into an executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 2464024B, Particular Matters Facilitated Meeting Mediations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Maricela.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session. And like I said, the executive session is scheduled to last about 30 minutes. The regular board meeting is scheduled to start at 5:30, so we will be back here by the time. Thank you. Okay, good evening again. We have reconvened into regular session, and there is no need to modify the agenda. For those of you who did not see the beginning of the meeting, we adopted the agenda by removing item F1, Contract Awards, as there are no contract awards. May I please have, by the way, it's good to see all of you this evening. Good evening. Kevin Cook from the ESP president-elect. And by the way, we are going to be recognizing the ESP with the resolution later this evening, so it's timely that you are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. So the next item on the agenda is the Congressional Record Presentation. A few weeks back, I had the opportunity to attend a community conversation on how to combat fentanyl and its effects, which was hosted by Congressman Doug Lamborn. Several other board members were also with me at that event, and after the event, we had the opportunity to talk with the congressman and his staff. Mr. Lamborn mentioned at the time that he was interested in recognizing District 11 on our 150th year anniversary with an official Congressional Record from the floor of the House. The proclamation was initially read at Palmer Time Capsule Event a couple of weeks back, and now we have the official framed Congressional Record to be presented by Mr. Jeff Anderson from the congressman's office. So, Mr. Anderson, I invite you up there. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add before Mr. Anderson?
It's just nice, again, to hear the continued celebration of our Sescon Centennial and to have it now logged into the official ledger of our board. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Mr. Anderson, could you read the proclamation if you want, share a few words from the congressman for the benefit of our audience?
Dr. Parth, Mr. Gall, and all of you Board of Directors, we want to thank you for your great service. Michelle, thank you for helping me as far as holding this up. This is the framed Congressional Record, which you can do whatever you choose or where it is best and most appropriately placed. I also have extra copies for each of the board members, and so these are just beautiful ones. Michelle, maybe if you can, yeah, thank you for showing it to all of those that are here. But I'd like to read this Congressional Record and statement that is entered into, it's entered into all of the minutes of the House of Representatives, the 117th Congress, it's the second session, and this was dated Thursday, September 22nd, 2022. And again, I'm here representing Congressman Doug Lamborn, who says, "Madam Speaker, I rise today to celebrate Colorado Springs School District 11's 150th Anniversary. Colorado Springs School District 11 was established in 1872 when Mary Queen Palmer, the wife of General William Palmer, the founder of Colorado Springs, started a small school at the corner of Cascade and Bijou Streets. D11, the oldest school district in the Pikes Peak Region, sits in the heart of downtown Colorado Springs. In the beginning, District 11 averaged 21 square miles when it was established. Now, the ever-growing district spans roughly 73 square miles across Colorado Springs. D11 encompasses 4.4 million square feet of facilities on 711 acres. The district's first graduating class in 1879 had five students. The graduating class in 2022 had 1,450 students. Colorado Springs School District 11 is defined by its innovation, diversity, commitment to service, and passion for helping students grow and succeed. The district's alumni include entrepreneur and philanthropist Fannie Mae Duncan, Olympic gold medalist Henry Cahu- Cahucho Adam Goucher, and Haley Washington. By the way, Haley Washington just graduated from Dougherty High School a couple of years ago, and was a classmate of my son, Jason, who also is a District 11 product, and so we want to give you a personal thanks for that as well. In addition to Haley Washington, NFL stars Terry Miller, Darrell Pollard, and Colin Bryant, and pro-baseball Hall of Famer Goose Gossage. From the classrooms to the school buses, the athletic fields and the playgrounds, D11 has provided young minds with opportunities to learn, grow, succeed, and give back to their community. Its students thrive academically and consistently demonstrate leadership in the domestic and global stages. Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleagues in Congress join me in congratulating the past and present educators, administrators, support staff, and board members of Colorado Springs School District 11 here as to 150 years of providing quality education to children in Colorado's 5th Congressional District. And might I add, here's to the next 150 years as well. Thank you for your great service."
Thank you.
(Applause)
So, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Please convey our gratitude to Congressman Lamborn, too. Yeah, thank you. So, moving on, the next item on the agenda is School Spotlight. It's North Middle School that is being featured this evening. Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, what a pleasure to have Principal Stephanie Leisure come forward to talk about North. For the record, again, I'd like to appreciate interim Superintendent Nikletich in his efforts to fill out our staff prior to my start in July. However, we did have a late opening, and so I am very proud to have my first principal hire, Stephanie Leisure, present School Spotlight. A couple of things here. First of all, "North, go north, woo!"
How was all, Scott?
So, if you're not scared on how hard it is we educate, take a look at how proud we are to be Vikings.
Yes.
So I'll pass that down. Vikings, which is the mascot for North, is near and dear to me. My freshman squadron at the Air Force Academy was Viking 9. My niece, as many of you know, is a sophomore at the Air Force Academy, and she legacyed into my squadron. So, all things Vikings to me are real. North is right across the street. Stephanie is my first hire as a principal, and she's knocking it out of the park. They are over projections for this year. They are over-enrolled from last year's October count. So when you hear that we have challenges in middle schools, which we do, come to North and you'll see what we're doing right. So Stephanie, you got the floor.
Okay, so, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I know most of you, honestly, like, I am a D11 person. I was really pretty much, I mean, I was, I moved here in, when I was six years old, and I went to Fremont Elementary, and then to Rudy, and then to Saban, and then I graduated from Dougherty. So, went to a couple of different colleges, and then came back and taught and was dean of students, and a, and an assistant principal at Dougherty, and was most recently the athletic director, and am now the principal at North Middle School. So, have been in D11 really pretty much my whole life. I live in D11. My kids are in D11 schools. Addison is a junior at Dougherty, and Jack and Parker, my twins, are sixth graders at Jenkins. So, I believe in District 11. I believe in its vitality and the importance at the center of our city, and the ability to, and the ability to educate kids in the utmost way possible. One of the things that I was most grateful for upon leaving Dougherty was how well-prepared I was for college. Whereas most people feel like college is really, is something tough, I felt like it was a breather. High school was tough, and so was, I was extremely well-prepared, and for that, I will always be grateful. And I'm seeing a lot in the same things for my own kids. So, thank you for allowing me to be here and for giving me the opportunity to work at North. It has been a blessing so far, and I've learned a ton in the first quarter. And I will say, in this School Spotlight, it has my name, but my assistant principals are there as well, because they have been there. These three assistant principals have been there for the past six or seven years, and have really been a stronghold for North. And when I highlight some of the great things that have taken place, they have been there for those, for those years. So that's Grant Ambrose, Heidi Googler, and Justin Wykam. So, just kind of some opening school events that, that were, that we organized right at the beginning. Of course, we had to do a meet the principal. We did that Tuesday, August 9th. We had approximately 150 family students, parents who were there to meet me, and it was, it was great and hot and, yeah. So, we enjoyed each other, and I was able to give them a little bit of background of what I was about, and again, be able to share that I'm a District 11 product, and am pleased to be. We had a pre-open house pizza feed with our, with our community, invited anybody who could be there, and we fed about 200, we fed about 200 people, and then about 50 hungry football players who were right done with practice, and we had extra, so that was good as well. And then an open house that same night, Wednesday, August 31st, we had nearly 400 students and families. We ended up probably about 426 with people, I mean, that's what I counted. So, we'll see, but it was pretty close. And I was excited for that, because in our gym, honestly, we recognized that we don't really have an awesome space to hold that many people and be able to, to hear us all. So, it was incredible to see that amount of the community. And what was significant about those visits is that I was able to build relationships with invested families in the North community, and I was able to learn about the North community. For those of you who don't know, North is this community right here, and then it is all the way south on Nevada, all the way to Motor City, and all the way north to Costco, like on Nevada, like on Garden of the Gods. That's North. And it's, and it's, we have hotspots all the way down, up and down Nevada, and then right here. So, when you think about that community, wow, what a diverse community, right? And some incredible kids and families along both that entire corridor. So I got to know that. And then, just an incredible cross-section. We have an incredible opportunity at North to teach empathy and to be able to learn from one another consistently, no matter where we come from or what our background is. And so that's definitely not only a highlight, but a point of emphasis for us. So, just enrollment-wise, you can take a look, the 100-year anniversary for North will be the fall of 2024. So, North opened in fall of 1924, and we look forward, I mean, that is less than, I mean, it is a year and a half away, so that's pretty exciting. The enrollment this past year was 550 students, and our projected enrollment for 2022, 2023 was 498. We are currently, actually, because honestly, we've enrolled about 10 kids in the past week, we are over 600 at this point. So, that's exciting. Our high point was pre-COVID, well, I mean, for the most recent years. Our high point was around 675. Our goal is to be between 625 and 650 for this coming year. We dedicate, we think that that increase is in large part to taking back some of the students in our community who had decided not to go to North. So, we had students who were going, when I talked to our assistant principals, students were going to District 20, they were going to Holmes, which I know that that's just taking kids from our own District West, and then also to Thomas McLaren. So we had kind of some pockets going to those places, and we're starting to recapture the kids who should be in our community. So we feel like that our good work, and then just taking back those community kids, are why we're increasing in enrollment. So, academically, and this is what I'm most significantly proud of, and honestly, I am giving all the credit to those returning assistant principals and the teachers at North. Unlike a lot of buildings, we had very little turnover at North. We only really had, we had some where we had people, we had some retirees, but only two teachers who decided to go somewhere different, and for that, we're exceedingly grateful. In 2017, North was a performance school. If you know that what SPF's are, right, your school performance framework, you have a percent that you can earn, we were only earning 32.8% of the points allowable in that SPF. And of course, you know that that is a status combination of status measures, your achievement scores, and your growth measures. So, that combination leads to your SPF. We were a turnaround school at that point. Up even that next year, in 2018 and 2019, we had an increase to performance, and then, of course, you have the COVID gap for a couple of years for SPF. And in 2022, our expected, our preliminary SPF is a 64.5%. So it's the highest, again, that it's been in the most recent past. So, in that case, a couple of highlights. In our 2022 CMAS, so in testing, ELA and math both met or exceeds, we had the highest percentage. So, combined in the district, it does not mean that we had the highest status measures. We didn't quite get there in math, but we were super close, but combined status measures and ELA and math, we are the highest performing middle school in District 11. So that's pretty incredible. And we are the only school with an upward trajectory after COVID. So, which is also really incredible, because almost every school has experienced some sort of downward trajectory. North has not, ironically. So, we're going to continue moving in the right direction. Our one planned focus is to enhance and grow our Title I in social-emotional learning programming and our Gifted and Talented Academy, which we call the GTA. So our Title I is a bit of a school within a school. We take kids instead of, instead of it being where they're not in our school, we take kids who struggle in the traditional classroom, and we put them in a smaller setting. And we have a teacher dedicated to that. It'll be interesting, Title I, whether or not we'll be able to maintain Title I. Our numbers are slowly decreasing in the Title I. As we capture more of this neighborhood, of course, our Title I, like our free and reduced population, is starting to go down a little bit. That will be a challenge for us. We'll have to figure out how we're going to meet that challenge. And then our Gifted and Talented Academy has continued to rise as far as our enrollment is concerned. And what is neat about our GTA is that we have gifted and talented, of course, identified students, but we also look for kids who are not identified, and they can basically test or show that they have the abilities and adaptability to be able to join our GTA in specific pathways. So, I give credit to our counselors in that, and I'll talk about them in a second as well. Our best first instruction targeted practice is authentic student-teacher engagement. That's going to be something, and I'm doing a lot of learning right now. So, I've met with all of, well, as of next week, I will have met with every single staff member and parent at our school for a 15-minute, 20-minute, like, personal visit. After that, I'm going to change that for classroom visits, and I'm super excited for that, because I love being in the classroom. So, that is, that is going to be our, like, what we really strive towards in these coming years, is like, like reflecting on our student engagement, teacher engagement, and increasing it. Our student-staff community culture, we do weekly social-emotional learning, not only in Title I, but also in our Gifted and Talented Academy. Our master schedule is super unique, whereas a lot of schools have a very traditional sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and they just follow the same traditional path. We have a really interesting master schedule. Our kids, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are never in the hallway at the same time. It leads to, it's a really interesting formula, where sixth graders are out, they go to class. Our seventh graders come out, they go to class. Our eighth graders come out, they go to class. They're in different lunches. So, we are able to mitigate the amount of over 600 students out all at once. So, it's, it's kind of an interesting, it's an interesting thing and eliminates some chaotic crossover. We are purposeful and intentional about our adult presence, and our counselors are amazing. They are, they are present. Our upcoming, our upcoming family events, we have a trunk-or-treat and fall carnival scheduled for Friday, October 21st, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. The carnival's like from 5:00 to 7:00, and the trunk-or-treat is from 6:00 to 8:00. So we're excited. We've invited our elementary feeder schools, so we're excited to try to pull that group in together. We provide holiday family assistance for both Thanksgiving and winter holidays, and we have really incredible partnerships with Peak Ed, Colorado College, UCCS Pre-Collegiate, and Thrive Counseling Services, who serves over 80 kids on a weekly basis. Okay, last couple of things. Our star assessment data shows a really strong start, but with still significant room for growth. That's across the board. Our, our staff feels strong collective efficacy. If you're thinking about collective efficacy, that's our staff's ability to feel like they can positively impact students, and our staff feels that. They believe, over the past six years, that they have created change and that they can continue to do so, so we want to preserve that. Our school accountability committee, I love them. There's between 12 and 16 on a regular basis. This past week, we had 16 regular attendees, and it's during the school day, and it's on WebEx, and that's why they like it. They're like, "Thank you for doing WebEx, and thank you for doing it after we can get our kids to school." So, it's been great. I mean, it's been great feedback, and I, they ask great questions, and they're really engaged. And then the last shout-out I'd like to say is that our counseling team is incredible. They provide a lot of extensive community, a lot of community partnerships, and they take the time to individually schedule kids, which doesn't happen everywhere. And they are also purposeful in their presence and relationship building. I've never seen counselors do lunch duty, and they do it every day. So, as, out at lunch, are two security guards, admin, and counselors, and nobody does that. So I'm super thankful for them. On the whole, I'm blessed to be a part of North Middle School, the Vikings, as Scott can attest to. It's a really special place. We do have our issues, but we are working forward through those, and we're going to continue to do our best. Thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. Leisure. That was wonderful, listening to your presentation, and I met your predecessor, Principal Kilroy. I had a visit with him for a couple of hours last year when I visited the school, and he presented the data and showed the trajectory, the academic trajectory with the math teacher that I think it was Mr. Kelly?
Yep, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, exactly. And I was so impressed at that time. You had some big shoes to fill, and you've
I do.
You have fit seamlessly out there, so I applaud you, and setting your goals high in wanting to get the enrollment numbers, 25 to 50 students more next year, and you're already out there, if you've got 10 students out there. And COVID has been a barrier for just about every school in the public education world. North did not use that as an excuse. You found, you not only got through all the hybrid learning and remote learning and all those things, your teachers, I want you to convey that to the teachers out there, that they were able to educate our kids and grow them academically, and your results show that. Where you were five years back, being a performance priority improvement school, and now where you are at this time, if we can do it at North, we can do it at the other schools, too. So, it's a shining example out there.
Yep, it's a credit to them. Thank you.
Yeah. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Director Bankus?
I also want to add my thanks to the fine work that you've started with your new assignment. And before COVID, I was at North for five years, and it's good to see that that momentum is continuing to grow and to envelop all of our kids in the community, because you do have a wide spectrum of kids, and they do need that individualized attention so that they can feel part of the group, even though there are differences. And when you're talking about the different lunch hours, I'm bringing back that one hallway where
Yeah.
Yes, it just, so thank you for rearranging that. It's got to make life a lot easier. And I wish you the best for the next, however long you stay there.
Thank you.
And for the kids.
Thank you.
And for the staff.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Director Jorgensen?
Former Dougherty grad as well. Yes, Mr. Horbaz at Dougherty prepared me for a lot of my English Lit classes at UCCS. It was much more easy, so. Yes, I love what you said, a principal doing a lot of learning. That is very nice to hear, because you are the instructional leader in our building, and, and it's nice to see that you are taking that initiative and the charge to, to get yourself up to snuff and then to lead your team, so that's great. My question that I had was with the authentic student-teacher engagement, what does that look like? Is, is that something that, that curriculum instruction has given you? Is that something you have, like, with a rubric and how you're coaching your staff? Do you need to share that real briefly?
Yep, of course. Great question. So, we, our, our learning walks are focused on, so our assistant principals, we fill out a quick, we go in a form, and it's a form on our phones. So, it's, it's really easy and quick to fill out.
Yeah.
We're checking, we're checking number of students engaged, like, that they're demonstrating engagement, not just that they're quiet, not just that they're not disruptive
Compliant, right.
That they are demonstrating engagement. And we're seeing, like, percent or number of students engaged and how that's taking place. So we're highlighting numbers, percentages, and instructional strategies that are taking place to make sure that we're ensuring engagement. So, right now, we're doing a lot of seeing what it looks like.
Okay.
Right?
Your, kind of your calibrations?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Yep, so that we can see how, moving forward, what are the, what are the most significant steps. It's been really, it's been good eye-opener, right? We have some strengths, and we have some areas of growth.
Sure.
So, one of the, one of the big things that I've talked to my teachers about right from the beginning is that I let them know, "I trust your professionalism. I know that you're teaching the right things." Sometimes the tough part is how we're engaging kids in the right things.
Right.
Right? So, that's the tough part, is how can we make sure that each and every one of you is engaged with what I'm saying, and making sure that we're demonstrating learning in that. So, they know that we're kind of assessing that and taking a look, and then we'll kind of formulate plans as we move forward, because that is, I mean, it's inherently really one of the most important aspects.
Totally. Yeah, is that something that you guys are creating in-house, or you have help with Ms. Asher?
Yeah, we, we created it in-house, and then we've kind of sent it, set it off to CNI, so that they can take a look and see what, if there's anything to tweak.
No need to reinvent the wheel if you got a good one here, right?
Yeah.
So, there we go. All right, I like it. Thank you.
Any further thoughts or comments? Okay, I do have one question for you, Ms. Leisure. So, you are, you are not new to District 11. You've been here all along, but you are new to this principal position. So, in this capacity that you are stepping in as a leader, what supports do you think you need to continue to grow North in this upward trajectory as a principal, as a leader of that building?
Yeah. So, interestingly enough, like, there's, there's someone that is helping me. So District 11 has been good. They're partnering with a, with a, and I don't know if you guys know this, but it's, it's called Better Up, and it's a, and it's a coaching program for new principals. I meet, I meet on WebEx with, with a gal who's basically a leadership coach. So, it, that's one step, because we've talked about, like, I've taken kind of an inventory as to what my strengths and weaknesses are, and in those weaknesses, she's pushing me forward and asking me to try things on a weekly basis that are pushing me out of my comfort zone. So, I think that that's one way, that, like, there's, D11 is already supporting me in that. The other part is just in the, in what the pitfalls are in change, in leading change, right? Because North is on such a positive trajectory. I want to be myself, but I also don't want to mess it all up, right? So, it's a delicate balance, right? I want to make sure that I'm leading how I should lead and how I, with my convictions, but I also want to make sure that I honor past traditions and what has gotten them this far. So, it's sort of that balancing act, and that's been tough, not going to lie, just knowing what things, how to proceed in certain areas and balancing that, like, how to be myself and yet how to make sure that I am continuing the good work that is already taken. continuing the good work that has already taken place. So, you know, advice surrounding that would be good.
Well, you've got area superintendents out there. I think Mr. Relick was a principal at North before, so he may be able to provide some.
Oh, he does. He does.
He, he is your area superintendent?
He's been helping, yep.
Okay. So, yeah, he should be able to provide some perspective and history of North out there. So what I'm trying to get at is like, as a principal, you've got so many different things to understand, the student discipline part or even having a better understanding of the master agreement. So you abide by that as you go about your day-to-day activities. Is there enough training that you received at the beginning of the school year so you could jump in to a situation like North? And, or is there something that's missing that we need to provide for new principals at this point in time?
No, I think it was, I think it was good. I think the start was good. I, I had a lot of, there was a lot in a short amount of time. So I think probably the most important thing was to put faces with names and contact information so that when I forgot the things that they told me, who do I call and ask? Like, that's the biggest thing. And Brian honestly is probably the most significant resource in that. Because if I have a question about, about student discipline and process, if I have a question about a difficult situation with a teacher, that sort of thing. I, I was trained in it, but I don't remember who are the people that I'm supposed to necessarily get in contact with. So Brian's the first, like, line of defense in that and can point me in the right direction. So anything that I have forgotten from orientation, he's done a really good job of making sure that I know where I'm going.
Perfect. Thank you. All the important people that you need to know are lined up against this wall. So get their phone numbers before you go and deal with that.
Right.
Thank you again.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Brian has been a principal in every school in District 11. So it's, it's safe that he's mentoring most of our, most of our new leaders, which is great. And if you get a chance to go over to North, especially since it's just across the street, you will see not just Stephanie, but you will see the entirety of the staff truly know every child. Stephanie and I have had some real challenges in some student and family opportunities. Then some of we have won and some of them we have lost. But one that is of particular remembering to me was on the second day of school, we had a student who got on the wrong bus. And he smartly got off the wrong bus. But then he found himself standing in the middle of the office surrounded by adults, talking to his parent or guardian to say, I missed the bus, I need you to come pick me up. And you know, that struggle of a middle schooler being an elementary kid trapped in a high schooler's body and not quite figuring out which way? The tears just started coming down this young boy's face. And the way that Stephanie and her team surrounded the child to ensure them that it's okay, it's a missed bus, we're going to figure it out, we're going to get you home. And it was just really nice to see that you all were there to grab and support a child in that time of need. I know that happens every day at North. We're super excited what's happening there and happy to have Stephanie as our school spotlight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we wish you the best and look forward to visiting North. I, I'm sure the board got the invite for the 21st, October 21st, the trunk or treat event. And some of the board members may stop by at that time. Public comments. Most of you know the board protocol by now, so I will keep this brief. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. Keep, keep an eye on the clock so you can complete your comments in the allotted time. Please be respectful of our speakers and maintain the expected order and decorum in the boardroom. The expectation is that you will communicate your thoughts in a professional manner. If you want to show support or solidarity for a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect, reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, these are in order. Okay. The first public comment, Jude Francisco. Hi, it's a student. Welcome, Ms. Francisco.
Do I start it on the computer?
No, 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 she will start it for you.
Thank you.
If you can lower the mic so, yep, perfect.
Yes. Good evening, board. Am I allowed to start?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Jude. I'm here to represent Palmer High School's Club Students in, Students in Action, where we advocate for students, we stand up for what's right, and we essentially just become the voice that students don't always have. And today I wanted to address a pretty common issue among District 11 families. And I'd more be addressing the general public than I am the school board. But that issue would be pertaining to school lunches. After two years of federally funded free school meals, as most of you probably already know, families this year are once again required to pay for the school meals. But what you may not know is that over 40% of, of District 11 students are enrolled in the Free and Reduced School Lunch Program. That is over 9,554 students in Colorado Springs. It's great that we have programs like these to help, but they don't always take into account all of the families who are not enrolled with it but are still in need. Maybe a family is going through a short rough patch, maybe the parents are too prideful to apply, and maybe they're just barely ineligible. No matter the reason, no matter the reason, kids shouldn't have to go hungry for a day just so their family can scrape by. In November, there will be a measure on Colorado's general election ballot that could give all students free school lunch and breakfast regardless of income. The food would most likely be healthier and it will all be locally sourced from farmers and ranchers who will be reimbursed for, reimbursed for everything that they give. Unfortunately, the school board has chosen to not make a statement on the situation because it was deemed too controversial for our taxpayers. And this is understandable. The funding for this bill would come from limiting the state income tax deduction, deductions for people in Colorado who earn over $300,000. Fortunately for many of us here, most, and most people in Colorado, that is only 3% of the state's income earners. Everyone else will remain unaffected. And at the end of the day, I don't know what it's like to be worried about when my next meal will be. But I know far too many people, too many teenagers and children who do have to worry. And I refuse to sit there and knew nothing about it. So once again, addressing the general public, please talk about this, research it on your own, and take a stance to help students in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Eustis. Did I get your name right? Oh, okay. Please introduce yourself, ma'am.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I just lost focus. I'm working on it. I apologize.
That's okay. Do you want to?
Do you want me to go next?
Do you want to come back?
Sorry.
I'll call your name. Michael Hackenberg.
Good evening, board. D11. My name is Mike Hackenberg and I have a son in District 11. After some correspondence with representatives of this board, I feel obligated to point out that some of the members of the board seem unaware of it, that this is a difference between education and indoctrination. The mission of the public school is to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. Moral instruction related to matters of sexual, sexuality fall outside the mission and squarely into the realm of indoctrination. This is not an anti-gay sentiment. I have no interest in sexual orientation of my son's teachers. They may be gay, that's their business. But that sexual orientation does not give them a license to preach to my son about their righteousness and way of life. If a straight teacher were to discuss this sexual morality with my son, let alone them, show them sexually explicit material, they would be reported to the police and rightly so. They would be called groomers. The standard is no different for gay teachers and their cheerleaders. These topics belong in the home, not in the school. It is by this reasonable standard that I expect the following. Do not ask my son his pronouns or insist to use pronouns for others that counter to obvious and observable biological reality. Remove inappropriate books from the library and the curriculum. And don't gaslight us by calling me a book banning Nazi. These books should be age appropriate for young children. Every thinking adult knows the difference between books like Lord of the Flies, A Wrinkle in Time, and The Outsiders, which examine but ultimately support family and social order. The books like Gender Queer, Lawn Boy, and The Book is Gay, with explicit scenes that elevate sexual acts to a morality in equivalence to traditional male and female relationships. Three, I do not degrade or don't degrade the family by excluding parents from teaching the values of our children. When a child asks questions that concern such matters, the answer should be, talk to your folks about that. Our kids need to grow in virtue, but that morality information, or that morale formation is respectably left to the parents. Tell teachers to keep their political and social learnings to themselves and stay in the lane of academic skills. We'll do the rest. Also, it would be easy to get them off the shelves if your librarians would cooperate. They should be, they should have to, we should not have to police teachers and librarians from indoctrinating our children. That seems to be why you're here, isn't it? Let's come together and knock this out. And thank God the last administration is gone. Thank you. I would also like to add, there seems to be announcements of LGBTQ club, uh, club meetings at my son's school on a weekly announcement basis as well. That needs to stop immediately. I thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Are you ready? Yeah, come on over. Ms. Eustis.
Yes, there you go. Again, I apologize. I am Ally Eustis. Good evening, President Mount Packham, Superintendent Gall, and Directors. It is commendable that the board wishes to acknowledge National School Lunch Week tonight with a resolution. From Board Docs, it states that good nutrition at school is an investment in our children's futures and a commitment to healthy children, and that it ensures the physical, emotional, and intellectual health of our children. With this in mind, how disappointing that the board voted not to make a statement supporting Proposition FF, Healthy School Meals for All. Proposition FF changes the state tax deductions for those making over $300,000 a year. We already heard from Jude that that's 3% of Colorado tax returns. I don't see how feeding kids is controversial. A board priority is increasing student achievement. As you state in tonight's description, good nutrition is necessary for optimal learning and success in the classroom. I am a teacher at Palmer. I, along with many other teachers, often pick up where our social safety nets leave off. For years, I've had snacks in my classroom because I know I can't ask students to concentrate and learn if their basic needs are not being met. While there may be more reasons than simply not having free meals anymore, there are most definitely more hungry students sitting in our classrooms than ever before. In the past, I spent $10 to $20 a month on the big Costco boxes of granola bars. I am now easily spending $20 a week. Our students need Proposition FF. Mind you, I'm a teacher with a teacher husband. While we don't make stacks of money, we do not personally qualify for free and reduced meals. Not having meals has personally hurt my family this year. As we all experience a higher cost of living, those meals helped my family to live more comfortably. I have a 14-year-old boy that I sometimes think will actually eat us out of house and home. We need Proposition FF. Speaking of my son, many of you have met him in the past. He was an eighth grader at North last year and is now a freshman at Palmer. Ian, if you know Ian. So for one final unrelated comment, I urge the board to consider its audience when speaking from the dais. So as not to name the acts in Director Loma's last report, let's just call them fedoras. You see, my son didn't know what fedoras were. You see, there was no big union boogeyman teacher telling him about fedoras. He did not hear about fedoras in any classroom. Nope, he heard about fedoras first in a school board meeting because he cares about his classmates and education and pays attention. Having a clarifying dinner conversation about fedoras was not ever in my parenting plans. Please do better.
Thank you. Michael Williams.
Good evening. My name is Michael Williams. I'm the Executive Director for Citizens Project, Vice Chair for Neighborhood Education, and I have three students now in District 11. The action item I wanted to comment on is the resolution for National School Lunch Week. Very similar, I feel like we wrote our speeches together or something. But good nutrition at school is an investment in our children's future and a commitment to healthy children and to optimal learning and success in the classroom. In recognition of the valuable role that District 11 Food and Nutrition Services play in ensuring the physical, emotional, and intel, intellectual health of our children and staff by providing healthy, fresh food and education on good health habits, the Board of Education is proclaiming the week of October 10th through 14th, National School Lunch Week in District 11. The board, the board voted down a support of Proposition FF, which would ensure that, that families have increased food and nutrition services. It increases healthy food and it increases nutrition services pay. The median income for Central and the southeast portion of District 11 is around $54,000. Our identified student percentage is 38.7%, and the recommendation is above 40% identified student percentage. Do we as a district not move forward with the support because of 1.3%? Or should we encourage schools to get every student to fill out the form during enrollment to help all students in the district? Action means much more than resolutions, and I'd encourage you to get in touch with your students and families that are struggling because lord knows there's too many. Citizens Project so far this year has spent $1,000 paying for lunches and meals for schools at Mitchell High School and Swaggart. Next thing I want to talk about is board norms that are on the agenda. Be respectful, be succinct, start on time, no surprises, accept board decisions with honor, govern with the best available information, presume goodwill, and act with integrity. That has not been the standard since January. The most recent example was two weeks ago at the last board meeting. Director Loma, who has been late or missing at over 50% of the board meetings, lacked integrity, spit on goodwill, and was blatantly disrespectful. Stating that teachers are teaching our students about bondage, intimate acts with animals, and sadomasochism is not only disrespectful but shows a lack of, of work by him. How many classrooms has he been to in District 11 that teach that? I volunteered in schools, teaching financial literacy, being safely engaged, and the work our teachers do doesn't go unnoticed, and that is not part of their work. Part of our board is our laughingstocks statewide because of that unprofessional demeanor. And I'm curious how long that will be the norm.
Thank you. Ms. Brenta Holmes, stand you.
I have some handouts. I'm very sad that Mr. Lomond has chosen not to be here, but luckily there's a copy of what I'm going to say, and I'm expecting a response from him. I am a kindergarten teacher in District 11. My job is to model proper behavior for my students and also to provide young people with the critical information skills to use technology. Our D11 families that you are elected to serve are required to sign specific documents in order for their child to use our technology. It is vital for schools to provide students with a solid education on media and information literacy as part of the curriculum. As quoted, "Teachers must be well-trained in the subject to empower students with the necessary competencies to critically address and assess information reported by all forms of media." D11 students are given the opportunity to engage with informative lessons through something called NearPod. This D11-approved program includes lessons titled, "Being a Good Digital Citizen," "The Power of Our Words," and "Fake News Versus Credible News." This curriculum describes fake news as dangerous, misinformation, and propaganda as false or highly distorted information that's intended to manipulate or mislead. This teaching aid for students gives several suggestions for identifying misinformation. Know the source. Reputable news organization, who funds the site, and what are their motivations? Number two, know the content. Is the story believable, logical? Is it news editorial opinion trying to persuade you? If you're not sure, you don't share it. Number three, know the facts. Use reputable fact-checking websites. Four, make sure the information is current and accurate. Five, know yourself. It's easier to fall for fake news if it plays on our emotions and appears to confirm something you want to believe. These programs emphasize think carefully about what you post and share. Misinformation or fake news has the potential to polarize public opinion to promote violent extremism and hate speech. Our students are expected to analyze digital information for credibility, bias, and influence. They are expected to evaluate their sources. What about adults? What about adults? As written in the Board of Education Operating Manual, Board members will take responsibility for making sure they have complete and accurate information before relaying facts in any forum and abstain from offensive or questionable language that may offend. Think carefully about what you post, don't share if you haven't properly researched, and of course, don't believe everything you read online. I have shared some resources that should be helpful, especially to Mr. Loma. One article is written with sites to help students fact-check. You might note that your mention of Fox News was not one of their recommended sites. I have also supplied you with colorful student posters to keep nearby as you write your next public comments, board report or Facebook post. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Donald Benjamin Keens.
Hello, I'm Donald Keens. I used to work for this district up till about a couple months ago or a couple weeks ago, where I had abruptly resigned because of some bullying I was exhibiting. I was a victim of bully, bullying by my administrators over there. And this is why I'm coming to you because I feel as a district as a whole, we can do better in supporting our, our staff and even our students. I've seen so many disciplinary problems over at Man Middle. That's where I was for the last couple of months. I worked with Dr. Givler back here over at McAuliffe Elementary and I loved it. I did not exhibit any, I didn't see any really big, major discipline problems, but when it comes to the middle school, the discipline is not enough. And the manipulation that I have experienced from the staff over there, you know, the admins and the, the treatment of my, you know, 12-year-old niece that goes there, you know, I've seen it all and it affected my mental health to the point where I had to resign and I tried, I did everything I could to go to another school. I applied at other schools, but the administers, administrators over there at Man were blocking my progress, which is not cool. It is not cool and it should not, should not be happening. I felt unsafe and belittled and Dr. Givler knows I have autism and it's taken, you know, some courage to be up here, to talk in front of you and on TV and whatnot. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just, just information, we can do better. And I'm no longer with the district, but I would like to be still. But unfortunately, I resigned my position and it's going to be hard to get back into the school district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Blakesley. I'm a District 11 resident and parent. I also teach social studies at Palmer High School and I'm also a proud member of the Colorado Springs Education Association. In my role as a civics instructor at Palmer, I recently had the opportunity to be interviewed by both the New York Times and KRDO News Channel 13 in regards to teaching my students about media literacy and identifying misinformation. It was a great experience that allowed me to promote my school, my district and the hard work that all of my social studies colleagues are doing to shape our children into productive, positive citizens. As a teacher, it's my duty to model to my students what I teach. In other words, I should be practicing what I preach. This community expects the same of our leaders. You, the Board of Education, is expected to model to the rest of us what it means to be a positive, productive citizen. It was made clear in the last Board meeting that at least some of you are in desperate need of some of the same training I provide my 15-year-old students regarding online media literacy. So here are two tips I can give you in this brief time. First, cooperate your claims. In the last Board meeting, Director Loma made a disgusting claim about teachers and even said he corroborated the claim. Clearly, he doesn't know the meaning of the word cooperate. In history, we work with evidence to prove our claims. I teach my students that it's best practice to have at least three pieces of evidence that corroborates their claims, ideally from different points of view. Second, practice lateral reading. Another skill that will be beneficial for you, the Board of Education, is the skill of lateral reading. If you come across something on the internet, say a group like the NEA, and you don't know anything about this group or you think you know something, but maybe do this anyway, you can employ the skill of lateral reading. Open another tab on your computer or phone and look up the organization. If you check the About page, you'll discover that the NEA is the National Education Association and that this group's mission is championing justice and excellence in public education. You can then open another tab and check out the Wikipedia article on the NEA. You can take this process further by looking up to see what other authoritative legitimate sources say about the NEA. I would like to encourage Director Loma to do a little more basic research before making outlandish claims about District 11 teachers. In other words, please be a good leader and model for our students how to be a positive, productive citizen in both the online and real world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I am Dr. Angelica Givler. And first, I'd like to note that I don't want to be here right now. I don't want to have to read this to you. The fact that I need to is emotionally and mentally draining. I'm a teacher in the district and a proud union member. I wear one of the badges that say I'm here because I am. I am a safe place for all students. As you can see, the only part of the badge that is visible to students is the part that says I'm here in the colors so that they know I am a safe space regardless of their race, religion, gender or sexuality. I would hope that all educators are safe spaces for our children. I want my own children to be in safe spaces because that is how they will learn and grow. It also decreases the chance of them taking their own life if they have at least one safe adult in theirs. I hope that these students have more than one safe adult, but if they don't, they have me. I not only am a member of the CSCA, but I also work with the CEA and I was at the NEA Representatives Assembly this summer in Chicago. This is the National Education Association that is being accused of quote promoting adult acts in the classroom. I will not say what Mr. Loma said because there are children in the room and as an adult, educator and professional, I recognize that this is not something openly discussed in front of children. You see, in my education courses, we discuss what should and shouldn't be discussed in front of children. We talk about how to side hug a child so that we aren't accused of anything. We are informed that we should never be in a room alone with a child and a closed door. We discuss accepting all religions without telling the students our own beliefs. This applies to a range of topics. We are professionals and understand what is and is not appropriate for the classroom. My badge does have a QR code on it. This QR code is not visible to students. They would need to be very close to me and have permission to even scan it if they had devices that were capable of such things. It is only resources for adults. I am capable as an adult and a professional of recognizing, recognizing when resources are meant for me and when they are meant for children. My badge did not come from the NEA, it came from a caucus. As per the nondiscriminatory guidelines set by the NEA, any group can form a caucus. There are lots of caucuses that range quite a bit on views. They all have information on their websites about their group. The NEA does not have this information. It is provided by the caucuses on their individual sites. This is a difference and it is important to understand that. The union gives myself and my colleagues a voice and support. I work in this district because of the union and the support that was previously given by the Board. I hope that we can continue our collective efforts to make our schools safe and effective for all students and that misinformation is not continued to be spread.
Thank you, Dr. Givler. Your time is up. Okay, that's all. That's all for all the citizen comments this evening. Thank you for your comments. The Board appreciates hearing from you. Your feedback helps better do our job. If you checked the box asking for a district administrator to contact you, someone from the administration will follow up and contact you. Moving on to special reports and first under that is, there could be some interesting Board member reports that you guys are going to miss by walking out now, so. Board member reports. Who wants to go first? Director Daniels.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to a few schools who we have as a Board made a decision to visit schools and I was given a certain amount of schools to visit and I'm taking the opportunity to do that, so it was great to visit Adams and meet wonderful people who work there. Thank you all for just opening your heart and your doors for me to be there. I really love it. I miss you guys tremendously. I am partial because I've had an opportunity to sub in the district and I've been all over and I've, I mean, I just appreciate you taking care of me even in that position and welcoming me in, so I want to also thank Principal Dr. Willis. He has his PhD, so I like saying that, at Thomas Edison. It was wonderful meeting him and the students. Also, Principal Butcher at Queen Palmer, thank you so much. And we have, well, it's, it's a teacher, Laura Andouard, I hope I'm saying it right, at McAuliffe. So it was wonderful being there as well, just seeing the students and Principal Butcher actually had her students take me on a tour and they were so professional and so excited to do it, so I was really pleased to see that activity and their willingness to be with me and not afraid and taking up space and being exactly what we're asking them to be. Their public speaking skills are developing in elementary, getting them ready for any type of projects or class projects they're going to have in middle school, high school. So just seeing that, what do they call that, intersectionality occurring and yeah, I love, love, love being with our students and our admin and our staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work in the midst of everything. And we have a lot of fundraising coming up, so Fall Festival at Adams, I believe is October 29th. And then of course, you just heard 21st is going to be at North Middle School. I missed the opportunity to announce Martinez had theirs October 8th, which is last week, so everyone, please do your best to support. I also want to acknowledge Dougherty's marching band placed sixth in the competition and I believe Palmer's placed 16th in the competition in Denver, so we have a lot of fundraising going on for our marching bands, our clubs. Everyone, please join in in supporting the hard work our students and our teachers, our after hours, our putting this together. It's a lot and yet it's exciting. It's exciting to see all of you working together for our students, so that's what I have and I, I'm really grateful to see the community be together and working hard for all of us to get forward in what we have to accomplish. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Ott.
Thank you. On the subject of fundraising, I was asked by a community member to give a shout out to Digital High School. Their 20th anniversary is coming up and on October 20th, they are having In-N-Out Burgers from 3:00 to 4:30. They wanted me to make sure that you knew it was 4:30, not 5:00. At Roy J. Watson Academic Campus in the south parking lot, for $5 cash, you can get an In-N-Out Burger meal. So that's one thing. Also, on the topic of funding, sort of, high school seniors can apply for Colorado universities between October 18th and 20th, so for free. So talk to your counselors if you are interested in making those applications. Also, there will be special events at some of the high schools on those topics. Finally, on the importance of words, on February 23rd, I made a statement that included an observation and a suggestion. My understanding is that my remarks may have been taken as personal attacks or insults and if so, I apologize. That was not my intent. I also regret that the district and staff members have had to expend some resources following my comments, especially time. And upon further reflection upon the statement, I would choose my wording differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bankes.
Well, it seems we have a, a common theme going on here because I also want to speak about Board presenting themselves to our public and to each other in the sense that we are all here with a passion for helping kids, teaching kids and making our school welcome. And as it's been enumerated earlier this, this evening, we have our Board standards and we do try to adhere to those as responsible adults in the lives of the children and in the lives of the staff and contributing to the collegiality of our community. Having said that, I also want to remind folks, as, as I remind myself, that sometimes when we get caught up in the passion of things, that we misspeak. And I hope that we demonstrate in our behavior the opportunity to you to say that when we misspeak, that we will reflect on our, our comments, rethink them and, and say them in a way that the words can actually be heard and not the intent to hurt people's feelings or to insult anyone. I think that's an important piece. I think it speaks well for us that we are reflective in all of that and that we demonstrate it. It may take us a little longer than, than perhaps people would like, but it does happen. And with the Board comments that are coming in from the public, as I think it was Julie said, excuse me, Director Ott said, we do listen to those, or maybe it was Director Malpakum, we do listen to those, we do take them into consideration because we are thinking adults, we want to do the best for you, for our kids and for our district. And I appreciate all of the enthusiasm of all of us working together because commonality, finding that common ground is what is going to move us all forward and I hope that we can do that. Moving on to a couple, another segment of our community and that is with our foster kids. I've had the opportunity to meet two foster moms recently. One, as a matter of fact, was today. She has fostered 60 kids in her lifetime, which is just in a phenomenal amount of kids who have come through her house and she speaks like everyone else who we have listened to. She wants to teach them right from wrong, she wants to teach them the value of work, she wants to make sure that they stay off of TikTok. I don't know how you feel about that, but she wants to make sure that her kids are giving themselves the best opportunity. She's adopted some of her children. She said at 58, I, my heart was stolen by these three, so I have adopted a, a middle school, an elementary school and a high schooler. So she's going to never retire because she has to work to make sure that they're all taken care of. But I do want to send a message, a positive message out to all of our kids and a special recognition to all of our families who foster children and to all foster children to know that they are loved, well-respected and we want to make sure that they feel comfortable in their schools. It's my understanding we do the best that we can to make sure that they are able to stay within their schools, no matter their home address, and I think that's an important piece in order to align our values with our actions. The last thing I want to talk about is the reason that I gather my grounding and that's to attend schools as Director Daniels has said. So Fall Festivals, art class today, going into a tutoring session with elementary students, you'll notice the earrings. I miss being in an elementary school. We're here to make sure our kids are welcomed, taught well and encouraged to be good citizens and I appreciate all that you do, no matter what your role, so we make sure that that happens. I respect my colleagues, I respect the professionalism that they bring to us and to this Board and to our opportunity to reach out to all segments of our community and to our Superintendent for his motivation, his enthusiasm and his ability to understand the trends, the direction and how to make this district the premier district we want it to be. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Director Bankes. Director Nelson.
Last week's work session, the board discussed the potential financial state of the district over the next five years. So before decisions were made, spending the fund balance money that we will be discussing later in this meeting, I asked administration to determine how much money would be necessary to get us through the gap that we know is coming due to five-year declining enrollment averaging. The work session had a lot of great information, and I just wanted to let the community know. I recommend you go back and watch at least the very beginning because it just gives you a lot more detail and understanding of the district's financial perspective, and I know sometimes folks watch the board meetings. I've heard they're sometimes better than Netflix, but maybe not so much the work session, so I just want to highlight, this would be one that I would recommend going back to. And I also wanted to just thank Glenn Gustafson and Laura Heronik for putting together the model that helped us see what the next five years could look like, and Mr. Gall and Chris Odom worked alongside figuring out potential scenarios to help us stop this financial freight train that we know is coming. And so hopefully, we can start bringing back students, and you know, maybe 100, 200 students a year back to District 11. I firmly believe that when we win, we raise academic achievement, we will bring families back to the district. And so it's with this in mind that I am asking for the community's help. I have a call to action for you all. In my kitchen, I have a sign that says, "I'm sorry for what I said when I was hungry." We've all been hangry, right? Can you imagine how hard it is to learn when you're hungry? We have identified a need for some of our students in District 11. There is a gap where a family may not qualify for free and reduced lunch, but are finding it difficult to put food on the table, or in our student's case, send them to school with lunch. The board has decided to approve $750,000 to be spent over the next three years to help feed these students. My ask of the community will is, will you come alongside and help us meet these physical needs? We are at a crossroads. The purpose of District 11 is to educate students, preparing them with skills needed for adulthood. Making sure our students aren't hungry is so very important. Do we want the district to shift and start spending its finite resources on meeting physical needs? I believe there is a better way, which could keep more money in the classrooms, staff salaries, and tending to our 50-year-old facilities. There are numerous nonprofits, churches, and generous individuals in our community. I envision partnering with these to meet this need by creating a program that families can apply to receive when they miss the cutoff for free and reduced lunch but don't quite have enough. So I'm asking that instead of us, we have this money set aside, the $750 million, we'll be voting on it here in a little, thousand, sorry, 750,000, we'll be voting on it here in a little bit, but just I imagine how beautiful it would be for a student and their family to know they are not alone. Others care about their well-being and have chosen to generously support them during hard times. At Christmas, we talk about it being better to give than to receive. Some of our students will get to experience this joy all year round by knowing they're possibly helping out someone in their own school. As a receiving student, I imagine it would mean a lot to know that others care about me. They're generously giving, and maybe I'd like to do the same for another in the future when I'm able. This is a bigger and better option. Our community will step up. Individuals will choose to bless our students, maybe some even in this room or watching online. Now, there is a measure on our ballot that was mentioned during public comment that in November could make this whole idea a moot point. If the community decides to feed all kids by the government keeping money from a group of people, then we don't need to have this conversation. But if it doesn't pass, the board has set up a Plan B in using our resources. But will you spread the word on Plan C that I have presented tonight? Perhaps there is a nonprofit that could add a branch to their original mission and help ensure those kids that don't quite have enough to get warm meals at school, which will allow the district to focus on our resources on educating them. We'll see what November brings. I'll bring this idea up again at that time if it's relevant. In the meantime, you can think about what it is you want District 11 to offer, and consider your part to lean in in supporting student needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Chergensen.
Okay, so, I too, we had a lot of public comment tonight, and was initially taken back by Director Loma's words and choice of advocating for some of his points. But as suggested by some tonight, I did want to do my due diligence in seeing what he was talking about. And so I did just that. In fact, I found an ABC Six article about Dr. Givler's badges. She talked about this tonight. And I did find that what Director Loma was discussing was, in my opinion, not safe for even some teachers, and so I just, can you share this HDMI? I won't share anything controversial, but I do want to show that Director Loma did find the appropriate piece. So I'm plugging.
It's not anything controversial.
No, wait, no. I'll keep all the PG stuff. Anyway, I'll continue while it's being pulled up. I did want to make this more of an informative piece for community members who maybe weren't here two weeks ago, who didn't know what Director Loma was talking about, or maybe for teachers who don't know that a part of their union dues do go to the NEA. And so this statement was more just for information and to add context for people that are wondering what's going on with all these different speaking pieces, and to staff that may not be aware, so. Didn't know if we could get that, and if you are interested, I can email these to you, but basically, this is what Director Loma was talking about. So, it is a caucus, as Dr. Givler mentioned. One thing that Director Loma was mentioning was, here's a news article I found, and for anybody who's interested, this is the one that he was mainly concerned about. I won't scroll any further. It is 10 pages, and it is graphic. This is, I think, pieces that do not belong in education, no matter what level you're at, and it is, as somebody mentioned, safe to say, hey, just talk to your folks about this. I appreciate our teachers in making safe spaces. I appreciate resources to a certain degree, but some things are better left to personal families and parental choice, so I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Does Director Loma have any comments or anything? Mr. Dalco, I know he's joining.
I do.
Okay. Director Loma.
Well, first of all, I have never said anything in regards to our teachers. So, the people that were talking about misinformation were acting practically misinformation, which is ironic. I was talking about the NEA, the union, that will be headquartered in Washington, and how their money goes to this organization that supports them. So for everybody to come up and say that I said our teachers are teachness while they're gaslighting, and they were doing the very thing that they said I was doing, which is ironic, well, it's very progressive of them. So I just want to be clear that I was only sharing an article, and as a result, I've had several union members who are resigning their union membership, but because the resign date has passed, the union's gonna keep their dues, so they have to wait until the end of their period to resign. So there are union members who are resigning as a result of this fact. So I encourage any union member who's further familiar by this to do the same. I wish this weren't the case, but I've only shared information that has been corroborated despite what those who claim to teach misinformation, well, they need to go back to class and sharpen up on their skills. And so I just want to say I appreciate your opinion. We all have a right to the opinion, but mine, I didn't have an opinion. I just shared information that Director Judson also corroborated from a different angle. So I, that's all I've ever said. And I hope we can learn from this, and for those who feel that that material, which is very offensive, shouldn't be there, then they should remove their support from the union. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Loma. So I will end with a couple of comments and reflections of my own, and thank you for the board members for sharing your, we've had some heavy subject here today, and we haven't even gotten to the agenda items. And as board members have reflected, we are a diverse board, representing diverse viewpoints, and we, during the, all of us are focused on doing right by our students. But during the course of that conversation, sometimes we do get into heated discussions and dialogues, and it comes out of the passion that we want to do right by our students, and we have an opportunity to self-reflect, which this board has done over and over again, not only tonight, but in weeks prior, and I am proud that board members can self-reflect on their behavior and correct themselves if necessary, and on that note, I do want to reflect on my behavior myself, and it's not only the comments that came at the board podium today, but other people have reached out to me, and it is the responsibility of the board, and I do feel strongly about this, that we conduct ourselves in a professional manner, and we don't use offensive or questionable language. And when that happens from the board dais, it is my responsibility as the board president to intervene, and I have not, I did not do that effectively last week when language that were maybe inappropriate to the years of children happened. So it's a learning process for me as well. I appreciate your grace and understanding, and I will do better in this regard in the future. And I do have a comment on the, some of the citizen comments that came today regarding the ballot measures that the board discussed at the work session last week, and whether we should adopt resolutions for or against such measures. I want to provide some clarity to the community on what the board decided, because today, it was brought to the attention out here that the board voted on it. The board did not vote on it, okay? We had a healthy conversation about both ballot measures that were brought up to the table. One was the healthy kids' meal, and one was whether recreational marijuana should be legalized in Colorado Springs. The board had various thoughts on it, their own thoughts and views on it, each board member did, some in support of measures, others opposing it, and often, it was in alignment with their own political ideology. We are a nonpartisan board and leave individual political ideology aside when we step on this board dais. And passing a resolution for or against these ballot measures would have opened the door for politics to creep onto the board dais, potentially creating unnecessary distraction. There are going to be some in our community that are going to be for it, and some that are going to be against it, and we witnessed that today in citizen comments. Our focus is the board priorities behind there. And all that revolves around student success. The board opted not to bring the resolution to the table up here to the board dais where we would have had to vote on it. We just wanted to avoid political conversations to creep into the work that we are doing, so I wanted to make that clear, and the board collectively has just one message to our citizens: Vote. Do your research on each ballot measure and vote your conscience. We have faith and trust you will do what is right by our children. So, moving on to more interesting news, and like Director Bankus shared about, I take, this job gets stressful a lot of the days, but the days that it doesn't get stressful are the days that when I get to visit schools. And I did visit Buena Vista Amanasori School, and I saw Ms. Karen out there, and she welcomed me, so I wanted to share some pictures from my visit this past Friday to Amanasori School. It's one of the schools that I was assigned to visit this year, and if I'm being honest, I did not know much about this Amanasori program before I walked into the school. I spent about a couple of hours that Friday afternoon, and it was just delightful. It's a whole different way of learning. I found out that Amanasori programs group kids by age in primary, pre-K, so those are ages 3 to 6, and then they have first to third graders and fourth to sixth graders. Buena Vista only goes till fifth grade. And they have a different block schedule, and my friend in the red sweatshirt talked to me about teamwork and how do you, you know, what is required, and that's the Buena Vista Running Club, and I got to visit Ms. Delius, hopefully I got her name right, PE class, and how much technology was incorporated into PE. Kids got to scan a QR code, and these kids know how to scan a QR code, and they were able to access workout routines and engage with each other. And then I got to visit the upper elementary class where students shared with me some of the projects that they were working on, and the way the classes are structured out there is the first grade and the third grade student is in the same class, so the first grade student, as he or she is learning, the third grade student is the model, and the third grade student is able to demonstrate their proficiency in the standards that they have mastered by teaching to the first grade student and also being role models to them. And one of the fascinating things that I found out about Amanasori education is they teach practical activities to the kids out there, so I saw even kids at a really young age, these are three-year-olds and four-year-olds, picking up the room after themselves, cleaning their working space, and just for learning that skill, I now think that my daughter should have gone to that Amanasori program. And then the teacher shared with me the activity that they were working on, and which was, should kids go to school on weekends? Mr. Gall, the unanimous was though the kids should keep their weekends, and they should not go back to school on the weekends. I stand corrected. There was one student who apparently made a bargain. He said that he would be happy to come to school on the weekends if he gets the other five days off. So it was just a wonderful opportunity, so the takeaways that I had was that hop, skip, and drive, which I think Superintendent Gall is going to talk about. That's the primary transportation that they use at Buena Vista, and it's working really good for them. The Amanasori secondary pathway, there is a potential out there that we can expand this program from where it is right now to the middle school level. Several staff members expressed interest out there, and I've talked to some other parents out there too. They, there is a need, and as we go through the academic master plan, maybe this is an opportunity for us. The support that they are receiving from central admin, they had a positive feedback on that. They talked, Principal Praknow talked highly about Dr. Comfort and how he's been supportive of, when you are talking about central admin leaning in and supporting, that was reflective out there. Parent communication, they have a regular newsletter out there, and the principal did indicate that she, being a new principal to the school district, she can probably use the support to learn better about the district protocols and things in place, so I was absolutely thrilled with my visit out there, and I promised that I would visit them more often, and I encourage my board colleagues to visit that school too, and thank you for welcoming me into your school. And then lastly, I want to give a quick shout out to the next one. To the Odyssey Echo student, I had an opportunity to be there when our ex-board member, Teresa Null, and it was good to see her too. Null, and it was good to see her, too. She gave an award to the Student of the Month, Ms. Abigail Gien from Odyssey Echo. And Ms. Gien is going to graduate a semester early with a high school diploma and an associate's degree from Pike's Peak State College, and she's planning on attending college next fall, majoring in environmental science and journalism. And Superintendent Gall was also there to talk to the rotary. That's all I have. Thank you. With that, moving on, Superintendent Gall, it's your report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mel Packham, to the board and to the community. I first want to start and just kind of wrap up. I have great honor and respect for the board members today who've come forward to try and clear and to get us to be seen as a unity of effort instead of an individual opinion. And so although I applaud public comment, I certainly want to give a huge shout out for Ms. Holmes, Ms. Eustace, Mr. Blakesley, and of course, our student, Ms. Francesco, for, first of all, for the three that I called out for still being here. If you want to participate in civil discourse, it is an expectation that you commit the time to commit to that civil discourse. If you have paid attention over the last several weeks, many of the public comments that have come forward to the board have found their way into our strategy and into our fund balance initiatives that you'll be hearing about later this evening. So yes, we are listening, but please give us the respect to give the chance to respond in kind, as the board has worked together tonight with great collective thought to be able to portray themselves, perhaps on slightly different political agendas, but on a unified set of board priorities that have leaked their way and seeped into the actions of my team, which reminded you are lining the walls here this evening. So I want to be very clear on that, that while we appreciate that comment, the idea of dropping the mic and walking out doesn't make your point more valid, it actually sometimes makes it somewhat more suspect. I will give everyone the benefit of the doubt and give a huge shout out to our D11 channel that does the streaming, that perhaps everybody that left earlier this evening is still logged on. And so if they are, please, I thank them for that. And then just personally, having that streaming, I have family and friends that watch these events and watch these board meetings and work sessions, from Pullman, Washington, to Addison, Maine, to Alexandria, Virginia, to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, to St. Petersburg, Florida, and then all the way back here, just up the road in Boulder, Colorado. So yes, it is wonderful that we can stream and we can share the information, but the power of being here is real. The power of staying here is what influences change over time. Okay. So I get to drive my own slides tonight. I'm going to introduce a new concept to my superintendent's report. If you haven't sensed my frustration with policy and politics and strategy discussion, you should. I'm ready to get some stuff done, and so I call that GSD. And so today, we're going to go through what I call my GSD shout-outs to remind us all that while we are politicking at four or five hours at a time, and I really appreciate Dr. Mel Packham's comments to correct the record from some of the misactions from two weeks ago, my team is anxious to get the work done, and it's happening, and you're going to see that in this report. So a huge shout out to our elementary school student who gets my GSD award, Julian Hartgrove, fifth grader at Twain Elementary. He has the highest attendance in school. He never misses school. He's a positive influence. He's constantly participating in every activity. He never slacks off. His principal says he must be exhausted by the time he gets home because of the amount of engagement that he brings every day to Twain. He has taught us that attendance matters. To Ms. Lyric Shirley of Shury, of eighth grade at Russell Middle School, she has taught us that every child being known is attainable. Last year wasn't so easy for Lyric. She has put in improvements academically and has grown socially within her peer group that she was named the Student of the Week at Russell Middle School. To every student athlete at Mitchell High School, do you know that when they finish practice and games, they immediately go over to the other field to cheer on the other student athletes? Nobody thinks that the day is done until all student athletes are done at Mitchell High School. They have reminded us that having an activity outside of the eight periods a day is what brings many kids to school. Yes, we have excellent instruction. Yes, we seek to improve that. But imagine our world if every student had an interest outside of the classroom. We know attendance and achievement would increase. An incredible personal shout out for our Strive Transitions Team program. This is Sam and Charles, who served me dinner last night in the Special Ed Advisory Council meeting. They served me the best Mexican food that I have had in Colorado since I've been back in July. And there were three or four other students a part of the Strive program. It was impressive enough that I've asked the board to consider having Strive provide our meals at least once a quarter for our board meetings. We are workforce-ready and ready for life. To our education support personnel, Erin Stivison, the School Administrative Assistant at Swigert Aerospace Academy. She filled two roles all of last year and into the start of this year to make sure that Swigert is up and running every day. She leans in and shows us that she gets stuff done by doing whatever it takes. To Mina Matanovich, our second-grade teacher at Trailblazer, she's an expert in Eureka Math. Many of you have heard public comment on the challenges with Eureka Math. Don't expect the FTE magic fairy to show up and just deliver a Eureka Math coach in every school. Nina's been able to build videos for us to be able to upload and share both in mass PD sessions and asynchronously for us all to learn the skills that she has already advanced in Eureka Math, to ensure that not only every one of our teachers is prepared, but that every one of our students is benefiting from a common core, standards-aligned math curriculum. She's taught us how to work smarter, not just harder. Another shout out for our principal at Freedom Elementary School, Rochelle Williams. She has taught us that culture eats strategy for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. She's got food trucks showing up every Friday out at Freedom to close out the week, not only just for students, but for staff and community to come together. She's hosting a fun run tomorrow, of which I'll be running for about an hour, probably three or four miles, to provide the support for the extra funds that she needs. So join us out at Freedom tomorrow, starting at eight and ending at 2:50. Maybe you'll get a couple of laps with the superintendent. A huge personal shout out to Megan Savala, an administrative specialist in our student support and engagement section. I met again with Megan this morning. She's really picked up the load in the recent departure of a staff member, and she has taught us that every student can be, should be, and will be loved, challenged, and prepared. She has backwards mapped out and has started to provide the resources to individual students and families, as well as schools, to get us away from this ever-increasing number of both self-harm and student-threat assessments that we are having to complete. Thanks to Megan and the team over at Student Assessments. To one of our HR directors, Tony Schoen, who was able to take one of our... Did I miss one? There we go. Thanks. Who was able to take a priority initiative that said, "We know we have challenges in HR. We know we are not meeting our staffing deadlines." You hear that again consistently. "But we said very clearly to HR, 'Get Mitchell fixed as fast as possible.'" I'm happy to report that all those still vacancies at Mitchell, the ELL division at Mitchell High School is now 100% staffed due to the extraordinary efforts of Tony and just getting stuff done. A shout out to an external partner, John Hanover, with the Hop, Skip, Drive team. We brought this company in to do an optimization consultancy on our transportation department. Again, public comment does matter. We are hearing that transportation is a challenge point for many parents. But not just are they optimizing what we're doing, they're providing innovative ways for us to think about transportation going forward. They worked very hard with Dever and our communications team to show people that it doesn't have to be the way it was yesterday. If we want to be better than we were yesterday, we have to think about being able to innovate into tomorrow. So a huge shout out for John for showing us that necessity can be the mother of invention. I want to talk just a minute of some of the documents you might have seen in the fund balance transfer. We have proposed for approval tonight by the board what we want to call the Mitchell Promise. Pike's Peak State College has come forward to the district and offered a 50-50 scholarship opportunity for invested students at Mitchell High School to have free access to Pike's Peak State College. We are through one draft of that MOU. We are on a second draft. We are back building in levels of rigor to ensure that Principal George Smith and his team are able to have teeth into how it is that we say what it means to go to college for free. There is no such thing as a free lunch. We will talk about some free lunch opportunities here, but there needs to be teeth in our academic opportunities for students. And so we're super excited to be able to build in both attendance rigors, GPA rigors, and more importantly, concurrent enrollment opportunities for our students at Mitchell High School, being taught by adjunct professors from Pike's Peak Staff College. That's a double win. We raise the bar of expectation for our students, and we offset some of our own staffing challenges that we have at Mitchell by bringing in existing high-quality instruction from higher ed into our high school environment. This is a huge opportunity for Mitchell, where this has taught us that we have to believe that we can win, and Mitchell High School is going to be the high school that is the first to bring in this idea of scholarship opportunities for us then to expand to other students of need across the district. And then finally, thank God for money. Thank God to the Fund Balance Task Force. This board tonight will pitch to and approve contingency transfers that will have us with coherence and alignment and unified mission and vision on where we are headed as a district. We have to stop counting every single second in the hour and stop believing that the day is there for our opportunity. We are positioned well to move forward, and this, to me, is the perfect example of getting things done to prove that this is equity in action. The Fund Balance Task Force and the contingency items that will come for vote tonight is the opportunity for us to prove that we are putting our money where our mouth is. Thank you, Dr. Mel Packham.
Thank you for your report, Superintendent. Any thoughts or comments on Superintendent Gall? Director Bankers.
Thank you for being very specific about the direction in which we're going, and I'm excited to keep going.
Moving on to consent items, Secretary Bankers, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
Thank you.
Could you?
I move that Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. Consent items are: E2, the approval of September 28th regular meeting minutes; E3, approval of personnel recommendations for October 12, 2022; E4, approval of board policy KDB and regulation KDB-R, public's right to know and freedom of information. Second.
Moved and seconded. Maricela Root, call please.
Director Bankers?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma? Director Loma?
He might have stepped. Oh, there he is.
Aye. You get me now?
Yep.
Thank you.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ah?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The consent items have been adopted. Moving on to action items, there are no contract awards. Tresher Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item F2?
I move that the Board of Education approve the general fund contingency transfer of Second.
So this item was discussed on September 21st and at the October 5th work session and as non-action at the September 28th regular meeting. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything more to add to our discussions?
No, I'd just like to introduce our interim COO, Chris Odom, and Laura Heronick to present the information tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, Board of Education. I would like to recognize and thank the task force members, some of who are here tonight. If I could get you to raise your hand, thank you so much. I appreciate your help. There was a lot of effort put into this, so thank the board as well. There was lots of meeting time and discussion, so I appreciate it. It means you care, and it means we're doing good things for our district, our staff, and our students. Next, I would like to provide a background and context for the viewing audience. This will include an overview of the work done by the task force. Last school year, it was identified that the district had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to reinvest in the district. It was identified there was a $50 million fund balance. In early April of this year, division and department heads were invited to seek input from their areas to recommend purchases. All requests had to align to five lenses, one of five lenses: student achievement, enrollment, attract and retain staff, safety and security, and social-emotional welfare. A task force was identified that included representatives from the community, committee members from the Mill Levy Override Oversight Committee, DAC budget, schools, employee groups, and area superintendents. The task force was charged with evaluating requests and supporting information to make a recommendation to the superintendent. The task force was informed that there was a likelihood that the Palmer High School HVAC effort was going to likely be pulled out of the SRR3 grant, primarily based on the high concerns of not meeting the September 2024 deadline, which was largely based on long material lead items and the likelihood of unforeseeable delays associated with construction in older buildings. This represents $14.7 million in the SRR3 funds. Third final, the task force's final recommendation to the superintendent included a request for contingency fund and an annual progress report to the board on expenditures. The superintendent presented this recommendation with three suggested additions. As the board indicated, they've met several times publicly, which brings me to tonight's agenda item. In the board packet, there are two documents that represent different funding sources. The first is the general fund, which is the action item up for tonight's discussion. This list represents a total of $43,394,229 and 20 separate tasks. It also includes a 5% contingency reserve and spans over three fiscal years. The other document represents the SRR3-funded requests, which total $14,700,622, and will fund eight tasks, which spans over two fiscal years. Collectively, this represents what we are calling the Fund Balance Implementation Plan of Approved Funded Requirements. Tonight, I am bringing to you the General Fund Balance Task for Implementation for this fiscal year. In the document in the packet, you'll see three fiscal years addressed. This totals the $6 million for implementing in this fiscal year, which is why we can only implement and encumber one fiscal year's worth of funding each year. So basically, I'll come back every year and ask for the funding that correlates to this implementation plan. Ms. Heronick has identified and designated special project codes associated with each project. This will provide for easy tracking and reporting of expenditures. Regarding the SRR-funded requirements, after we obtain CDE official approval, I will come back at the end of October, I'm assuming the 26th, requesting fund transfer approval into the SRR funds. So in summary, this is a very unique opportunity for our district to make investments in student achievement, enrollment, staff, and safety and security. So collectively, I just want to show one pie chart. So this is what you are approving tonight. This represents that collectively, the $41 million and the SRR funds total $56 million, and you are investing in our district 35% towards... million dollars and you are investing in our, our district thirty-five percent towards student achievement, nine percent towards enrollment, eighteen per- percent for staff at, uh, attraction and retention, and thirty-eight percent to safety and security, which align very clearly to the board's priorities. This concludes my overview. Ms. Heronic is here to answer any budgetary questions you might have. Um, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Odom. Uh, and I want to thank the task force too. It was a diverse group of stakeholders that came together and provided the recommendation to the superintendent and then over onto the board. And as you summarized, we have this part of money which has added up over the past three, four years due to some of our um, uh, staffing vacancies in our uh, district. And at this point in time, it provides us a unique opportunity to make key strategic investments and we cannot cut through um, the problem that we are facing right now. We are going to be talking about some budget shortfalls in the next couple of years because of that five-year enrollment averaging. Uh, but to get to where we are going, that is the board priorities behind me, uh, we need to make some strategic investments and we are making some strategic investments uh, through this um, uh, and I want to point out a couple of things that are there. Uh, we are going to be um, either with, through this um, uh, fund balance money or through the SR money, we are going to be uh, expanding the free or low sc- low cost after-school programming from our current nine elementary school locations to seventeen locations next year and possibly adding tutoring services for this after-school programming at some other locations. So this is a high value add for our community. We've also, uh, even though you talked about the Palmer HVAC system and it being removed from the SR allocation because of uh, time constraints, whether that could be, that project could be completed in a timely manner, but we've set, set aside a million dollars for short-term air conditioning solutions at some of our schools, including uh, Palmer. Uh, we up, we are upgrading our broadcast system at each of our high schools to four K, so our students have cutting-edge technology to work with in our CDE program. Upgrading the fiber backbone in our schools, which will provide faster speeds and downloads, improving the quality of educational instruction in our classrooms. So there is a lot of good things out there, including um, uh, money set aside for preschool programs, um, additional PD time for our teachers and possibly ESP, additional tutoring time, coaching for first-time principals. So, uh, with that, uh, board members, do you have any thoughts or questions? Director Jorgensen?
Just a question for the backside of this, so the fifty-six million that we have earmarked for, for these, this pie graph here, what do we have left, uh, as, you know, the be- the backup rainy day, keeping the coffers fund of that overall money? Just so people know that we've set some aside for-
Rainy days.
Rainy days.
Thank you, that's a great question. So, um, from the gen- the fifty-six million is combining SR money and general fund money. So I'm only going to speak to the general fund. At the very beginning of this process, we set aside fifty million dollars and this is only encumbering or earmarking or preserving the forty-three million. That delta, that's almost seven million dollars will be set aside towards the declining averaging enrollment, um, decline that we anticipate having to, to deal with next fiscal year. There are other set-asides for emergency, um, operating expenses that if necessary, the board could vote to per, to dedicate money towards. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, and please add in the percentage of our general fund budget that our policy keeps in reserve.
Thank you very much. So last year, the Board of Education and their approved budget set-asides are, are identified, appropriated seventy-five point seven million dollars of undesignated fund balance. That includes the three percent taper, if I take out the policy required four percent, that equals twelve million and then we have ten million set aside for unexpected operating expenses.
So that's, uh, adds up to, uh, roughly over twenty, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three million, something of that nature.
Twenty-two million plus this almost seven million.
Yep.
I found this on the web.
Okay, that's my- Siri said it's unanimous.
Director Nelson?
I just want to echo, um, and explain to the Fund Balance Task Force, they were presented and approved around fifty million dollars worth of items, but then we had the declining enrollment conversation and narrowed down to forty-five, forty-four, around forty-four million dollars worth of spending, so that would be, um, the difference in case the Fund Balance Task Force is wondering why the amount dropped, just we're looking ahead in the next several years, what we need to do to tackle that gap with the declining enrollment averaging without having to do some major budget cuts, so hopefully this money will keep that from happening. I also just wanted to, um, thank the team for all the hard work that they've done. I know there are some items in here that got added at the last minute and there's still some follow-up that administration will provide to the board. At this point in time, we are trusting administration with some of this, uh, money with, the details will come and, um, going forward though, I hope that we can get the information upfront and not have these last-minute items come along. I know that a lot of time has been spent on this, but it's a really big decision. We want to make sure we're being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and I don't think that, I, I will not apologize for slowing it down and I think if we needed more meetings, we would, we would have them. So, um, there are some items in here that, um, there's some follow-up and we'll make sure that happens. Um, for example, the Mitchell promise, some of the information presented in the superintendent's report is new to the board tonight, so, um, I just hope that that doesn't, um, continue to be how we operate, I, that would be my ask. So, um, again, thank you to the team and it's exciting, I understand the desire to move this along, um, but we, we're, we're being very cognizant of this money and spending it wisely. So thank you to everybody that helps guide, um, the decisions.
Thank you, Director Nelson. Do you have a response?
Oh, I, not a response, I just wanted to acknowledge the faith and the confidence in the board and marry that with the innovation of the staff. Uh, um, the board came back to our staff upon my first presentation, which was about ninety-five percent consistent with the Fund Balance Task Force recommendations and the board challenged us to raise the bar on getting more money into achievement and so many of the items that are new and are fresh are coming from the minds of the innovative folks who line the walls here, as I tasked them to go back and dig deeper into their own bag of tricks, how it is that we can ensure that this is the watershed moment for District eleven to say the day that we became the premier district in Colorado Springs.
Thank you, and, uh, that's something that the board has tasked you with Superintendent, to look creatively out of the box and come with innovative solutions and, uh, uh, some of the solutions that you proposed with this fund balance money is those, are those innovative solutions, but I hear what Director Nelson brings to the table too, if we can have some of these, um, information, uh, in a timely manner, then that would help the board. Okay. So with that, uh, any further, um, questions on this topic? I had a couple of quest, quick, uh, follow-up, um, Ms. Odom, if you've got the answers to those, um, those, uh, safety vestibules, uh, that's going to be worked on, do you have a timeline? This is just for our community, it's eleven million dollars that has been set aside to make our school entryways, uh, uh, they are already safe and secure, but we are going to make sure that we are taking all the precautions that we need. What's the timeline that our schoo- school community can expect that work to start and be completed?
Thank you for that question. Right now, we're awarding a contract to conduct a security review and assessment and at the conclusion of that in the January, February timeframe, we'll have more information to feed into the question that you're asking, but we do anticipate starting the, the visitor entryway, uh, effort next July to start that process. That doesn't mean we'll be changing everything, but it'll start the process.
Perfect, thank you. And then we are also, one pointer note to the community, Coronado is already getting a new track field and what's the sta- status of that, is that alr- or, is that in?
It's, it's getting ready to be designed, the design will start and then once the design is concluded, they'll have an estimate for construction cost. I will most likely have to bring that to you for board approval because it will exceed a million dollars unless some miracle happens and it's under a million dollars, uh, then we will, in this program, we'll be, um, working on the next track. We'll do one each fiscal year.
Right, and we have set aside for our community, so they are aware, the next, uh, high school where they're going to get the new track and field is Doherty High School.
That is correct.
That's the two point two million dollars that's set aside for-
Yes, that is correct.
For right now, for the, for this, that's, um, being, um, appropriated at this po- time. And my last request is, uh, maybe it's at the end of the year, the superintendent can, uh, circle back with the board and, uh, provide an update on, since you have specific codes for all these projects, can they circle back and provide an update on the status of where they are at, how much money has been dispensed and that could be even through an email or at a work session?
That, yes, we will commit to that.
Okay, thank you. With that, seeing no further questions, roll call, roll call Maricela.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it Superintendent, you've got, uh, resources to turn the district around.
Got some more get stuff done opportunities, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is the Unified District Improvement Plan. Director Daniels, can you please make the action item for, make the motion for action item F three?
Yes, thank you, I move that the Board of Education approve two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three District Unified Improvement Plan for submission to the Colorado Department of Education. Second.
Moved and seconded. This item was discussed as non-action item at the September twenty-eighth, uh, regular meeting, um, I think there was minor revisions, so I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Gull.
Yeah, um, just in, uh, the full transparency, the way we seek to operate with the board is as you all give us feedback, we don't want to just say that it was done and so we took the comments of increasing our community engagement, uh, major improvement strategy and I want to ask both Tamara and David to come forward to give some of those updates. Um, we think it's critical that we're fulfilling the request of what we hear in first read and then is not getting it for approval there afterwards and we felt that the update here was significant enough that it was worthy to be able to breathe both the board and the community to understand what it is that you're recommending that we submit to CD, to CDE. So first of all, thank you for the feedback and secondly, thank you for the team to be able to deliver. Tamara?
Great. Um, thank you everyone. What you'll notice, um, tonight, uh, with David and I, um, speaking, um, on the revisions, that we're focusing and narrowing in on our major revisions, which is in the area that we were asked to revise and connect, um, family and community engagement. Um, and, uh, it's true to the work that what we're doing and the strategies that we're aligning to with our board priorities as the foundation, with student achievement success, um, and focus towards our future vision are paramount and at the center. Um, and so with that, um, this is a reminder of those three major improvement strategies. Again, where we're focusing deeper on is, um, listed in red, you'll also notice, um, that it is, there's a change in the title of the language, um, before it was, uh, research-based strategies, communication strategies, and so we wanted the title to better reflect the work of what we're doing and where we're focusing. Um, so you can see that, uh, listed here as well. I also just want to comment, while we are sharing this visually, um, for our presentation, there are not differences in terms of, um, the content. The action steps and what's presented here are the same as what's been posted on the board, um, docs and, um, uh, that I think is really important to note. Um, all right, so going deeper, um, it's really important, if you look at the base of this visual, the tree, that everything that we do with family and community engagement is rooted in, um, wanting more student and family voice, wanting more st-, um, students, um, uh, wanting to attend school and having engaged families. That is what we're working to strive for, all in the spirit again of our priority of student achievement and success. Um, with that, there are three main areas, um, listed there, one, two and three, um, those are the research-based strategies, um, that we're using again, connected to our five E work, um, connected to the University of Chicago. Um, again, this is similar to the adjustments that we've made to the best-first instruction strategy, we know with best-first instruction, we are focusing on two main areas, systems and, um, content, uh, professional learning. Again, with family and community engagement, we are focusing here in these three areas, collaborating with community stakeholders, positive two-way communication and co-creating engagement plans. From the last time when we talked about best-first instruction, in those two areas, we had aligned very specific to D eleven, um, actions. You will see that tonight in these three, um, areas, very aligned, specific, um, action steps connected to these three main focus areas. Um, we also, from the feedback we heard, we're very appreciative from the feedback from this board, from the direction from our superintendent, um, and then also from the, um, collaboration experience that we've had with our DAC and other, um, community members. So this, um, visual is just, uh, it's, it's a representation of that, of what community engagement in D eleven means. So it's that interaction of school and district, community and what we're focusing on. Again, those three areas that I described with positive two-way communication, collaborating with, um, community stakeholders and that co-creation of community engagement, um, plans and initiatives, all more connected and tightly aligned to our major, um, focus, um, strategy of best-first instruction. Because we know if we work together as a community, that is when we really hit the goals that we have in best-first instruction, it can't just be, um, anyone's school, any one person, it is all of us together. Um, and I want to, um, thank again the leadership of our superintendent, um, who met with us and actually, um, helped direct us to, uh, this visual and this work to connect all of the pieces together.
Yeah, I just want to interject for a moment that one of the epiphanies we've had as a team, particularly in meeting the needs of timely information for the board, is that literally every time we say we're going to do something, when we then go look at the rhetorical or historical, uh, documents that support these initiatives, they're reflective of the way the district was operating under the previous superintendents and the previous board. We are having, i- it is like the house remodel that just never ends. Every time we pick up a new idea and then we see what a reporting mechanism is, we realize that that mechanism is not consistent with the language that we're using and particularly what we're delivering in schools. And so it came up last week and, and I want to, uh, or two weeks ago, re-invite and reprioritize that school visits for the school board members, try to pick at least one, one plan review so you can see these items in action. Yes, our documentation for CDE needs to be tight. Yes, we need to spell words correctly, our grammar needs to be right. We have spent a preponderance of our time getting the big rocks first, which is how are we changing the actions and connecting our area superintendents with our subject matter experts and with the, uh, support of our community at multiple levels to be able to realize that change. And so much of our challenge in finding the ability to get things to the board in a timely fashion has been because we are literally typing minutes before meetings to ensure it is reflective of the strategies of which you have approved and asked us to deliver. And so we will obligate to be better at that, to make sure we're meeting that, to, uh, but as we come together, recognize that there are, there is no just changing the date on a document here. Every time we seek to do that, we read it and realize it is not reflective of the work that you brought us in charge to do, so.
Absolutely, it's no different than what we are asking our schools to do and what actually- Absolutely, it's no different than what we are asking our schools to do and what actually high-performing, very qualified, successful school leaders do. Your district plan, your school plan, is your living document. The action steps are actually what you're doing. And, you know, they didn't stop, it doesn't stop us because this is a two-year document, right? We needed to adjust pieces, and we heard that clearly with you in terms of family and community engagement. I can just, I'll give you like just a quick example. We had our recent K-12 meeting, which I had the opportunity at the last work session to tell Director Bankus just a little bit about living the exact actions that we set out to do, that we had explained and went through just a few board meetings before that in action, delivery. With that, again, in these areas of positive two-way communication, collaborating with community stakeholders and co-creating engagement plans, we're going to talk about the aligned D11 action steps that support each of those research-based areas. For that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, David Colicky.
Thank you. Thanks again for your time and walking, walking with us through this, through these details. Before I, before I start, just want to acknowledge some of the frustration around utilizing the tool that we are given by CDE to do these unified improvement planning processes, that we are limited in the way that they're formatted and the way that we can particularly track changes and things of that nature. Just want to let you know that I'm actually on the Accountability Working Group for the CDE, and they are in the process of re-envisioning what this process can look like. So I've moved this forward to be, we need to have a better way to track changes across these because we're using them in multiple drafts, and it's a perfectly reasonable expectation. So that's been, been moved up, moved up the chain and being talked about, and it should be, should be one of the revisions to the new system, which I'm excited to see. So, moving into the details here. The real takeaways of these action, action items and these action steps are positive two-way communication and then really just engaging with communities and families to learn, learn about who their students are and who their children are. Positive two-way communication is really defined as early and not necessarily tied to a negative outcome first, right? So there's communication that happens before, before it's actually needed in the sense that we are reaching out to families to have conversations around supporting specific content. In this case, it's early literacy being highlighted because that's the best-first instruction highlight. But this is completely through the entire system. So not just K through 2, but these strategies will be implemented across all grades. And really just being able to support families and utilizing their data well. We have a new data system that's loaded with lots of reports that can be overwhelming. And so really honing in on what is helpful for a family and for parents to really help their children with. And also then just really speaking to promoting school support resources that, that can be used at home to grow academic, academic performance. And this is a two-way conversation. So, and it is, it is, it is proactive, it's a proactive conversation. Same idea in mathematics, really looking at problem-solving, mathematical ways of thinking, but, but having a two-way conversation about what does, what, where is your child at based on some of the data? Let's use the data well that we have, that we have access to and clearly, and then have conversations with families about that. And then I didn't highlight on the yearly literacy, but really supporting after-school enrichment and tutoring, which was a big topic of the last work session. When we look at two-way communication then, learning from families about their children. So this came, this work comes out of University of Chicago, as Tamara mentioned, but also a lot of work out of Boston Public Schools and showing this probably had one of the highest effect, effect sizes on family engagement and families feeling connected to the work of their school. So seeking expertise from the family about the student. Tell us about your student. Who is, who is your student? What do they like to do? What do, what are their passions? What do they want to do in the future? And really aligning and partnering to a deeper degree with SACs, PTOs, DACs, and having these conversations and other parent advisory groups that were, some of them mentioned tonight with professional learning aligned to how to do this well. Then also engaging the student's home culture. So really bringing who that student is into the classroom as well and honoring that and celebrating it. So again, through SACs, PTOs, people who are very close to the work, other advisory groups. And then to systematize this, One Plan check-ins will have and build in these, these expectations to explore strategies and gather and share and celebrate student cultures. How is, that will be a question in the One Plan overview. How is this being done? And what, how is this being operationalized? Then finally, communication with community stakeholders. We have many, many community groups, professionals out in the community, expertise in the community that's directly tied to some of our, some of our minority populations, some of our non-English-speaking populations who know and understand the cultural values of that community and can provide us insight into how to do this two-way communication. Our model up to this point has been pretty much one way. Here's some information. Here you go. We, we informed you, and that's our communication. And that has not, that has not served us completely well. And so when we have that two-way, we need to understand what are the cultural values of the community that we're speaking into? What are some ways of communicating these things in ways that resonate with that, with that community? So really partnering with community leaders and community groups in that work. And then putting the superintendent on the hook here for several forums with a representative SAC members from every school to discuss best-first instruction, student achievement, and those types of things, engaging the community with that. What kind of resources in this two-way communication do we have? And then really continuing to grow. We spoke to this last time, we talked about this at the last board meeting. Continuing to grow family engagement tools within the power school infrastructure. And then co-creation of engagement plans. So really, again, that One Plan, come in and see the work in action. And we want to have that invitation out to a greater number of community members and have them have a, have a, have a buy-in and an active role in that work because it's so vital. But then really, taking what you saw in the Fund Balance request, one of, one of those items was the Design Lab, the Innovation Design Lab process, and applying that to this question. So engaging with community members and community leaders from diverse communities and diverse viewpoints and backgrounds and work together to design some ways of engaging students and, and getting a deeper engagement into those communities with our families and schools. So really, again, it just wraps around into community with a focused strategy and having a two-way communication process now where it's not just school and district communicating to community, but it is school and district and communicating with each other. With the targets that we want to really highlight, these come straight out of the UIP again, so, so no new information. But about a 30% increase in the 5E Essential Parents Survey Response Rate. We are in the process. We just sent off our, our family roster today to 5E. So we are getting ready to launch that over in an earlier time window to coincide with parent-teacher conferences to try to up that, up that participation rate. So we're excited about that. 20% increase in families reporting feeling connected to their students' learning. So these are about four questions within the 5E Family Survey, where parents or families are answering different components of how connected do they feel to their child's learning? They generally feel very supportive of the school, they would recommend the school, but we have a divide. They would recommend the school, but they feel a pretty significant degree of disconnect from what's happening in the school. So we want to, we want to start to chase that down. SAC and PTO representation at every school, have every one of those slots filled. A 2% per-year attendance improvement, now this is on average by school. So 2% is pretty, is a pretty significant growth on average at each school. And we're, we're pulling out data that's showing very, very, I mean, it's not rocket science, right, to say that. For best-first instruction to have its full power, we need to have students in the classroom. We need to have students at school. And so if, if, if a school in our own data, 90, if a school has 92% attendance rate or better, they are three times more likely to meet math growth from our own data. This is an, this is an early win. This is, this is, this is a baseline thing that we can really be tackling, and we are tackling now, but we'll continue to push on that. And then all academic advisory groups and steering committees will be filled. So just continue that engagement of getting more and more families and deepening the diversity of that engagement as well. Making it so that the structure doesn't preclude engagement based on one, one life circumstance or another. So with that, I will open it up to questions for both Tamara and I.
Can you just comment on that? I think we did five essentials in Spanish, that was a question.
Oh, that wasn't, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, it is, it is in both Spanish and English, both, both surveys. So we're doing early the family survey. We're going to keep in the same window the teacher and student survey. That's the one that we're always been, always been talking about for the last three years. That is in late January, early February. Both of those are bilingual.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Colicky. Thank you for my thoughts of it too, and for all the feedback that you captured from the board and also from the DAC Accreditation Subcommittee and incorporating some of those in here. I am really excited that we are engaging this two-way conversation with our community because the statistics that are out there from the Five Essential Survey, Parent Survey, is that's something that we are not accomplishing at a good level at this, at least in the past. So we are making a deliberate attempt to engage with our community, stakeholders. Parent engagement translates into student achievement. I'm also appreciative that DAC and SAC involvement is strong at this plan, beginning with every school having a working SAC. And hopefully that happens much earlier than even next spring because that was the deadline that was put out there. I also noticed one thing, sharing the best practices through the WHAT Works sharing site and communicating that to the entire district. I think that's something Director Jorgensen has called for, for us to do in the past, WHAT Works, and why can't we share it? And it's called out in this plan. And the performance indicators too, at the end of the UDEP, they are more robust and substantial with clear targets and scale scores, median growth percentile, graduation rates, attendance, and 5E surveys. So all those revisions that you've incorporated from the past couple of weeks have made this plan even more stronger. So with that, I'm going to, Director Bankus?
Yes, I also want to echo the ambitious goals that you've set with the 30% increase in the five essentials and the 20% increase in families. I think that's ambitious. I think it speaks well for the direction and the energy the district is going in. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to add in that, maybe sharing that, doing that when our parents are there, when the parent-teacher conferences are taking place in October will get more parents to respond. You capture them when they are in schools. By the way, is the, are those parent-teacher conferences going to be in-person or remote this year? Do you guys know how, how that's going to be? Is it in-person or remote?
In-person.
In-person? Okay, so, yeah. It would be good to get our parents back in our schools, and when they are in our schools, we can get them to fill out the surveys. So what you're telling me, David Colicky, there was, Dr. Colicky, there is no mention here, a request to the board that, that you want ice cream served by Director Jorgensen?
I was going to bring that up. I was going to check out, check that out again. I do want to point out though on that, that was a recommendation straight from DAC Accreditation. So they brought that forward, made perfect sense, excuse me. So just to highlight the relationship and the growing relationships that's happening, that, that innovation came straight from that group, so.
Yeah, I, I'm glad that, yeah. I'm glad that our community is engaged, and that is really a good idea to do that in October. Director Jorgensen?
So with having parent-teacher conferences, having a QR code while parents are waiting for their, their time slot to come see, they can, you know, quickly do it on their smartphone and knock that out, which would be helpful. As far as the two-way communication goes, I had a couple of teachers who, you know, we, we know on the board and, and people that are here know the reason for the push and, and, and the, you know, the, the strategies and the direction. But I, I've heard from some teachers who are saying, I don't understand why all of these things are happening, why all this change is happening. Is it, they're tired and they're not going to come watch this till 11 o'clock tonight, probably. So are we doing, are, are we doing a good job with our area supes and our principals? And, and, you know, to mention what Mr. Gall said earlier, and hey, every time we go to do something new to address this next step of action, we have to make this new form. And that new form means the old form needs to go. And so we're, we're, you know, for teachers who have, have been in a routine, in a, in a groove to go, there's a lot of changes coming at me and, and I don't know how much of this I want to handle anymore. I'm ready to jump ship. Are we doing a good job in communicating the, the way to say, hey, stick with us? We're, we're operationalizing, as Mr. Gall mentioned when we hired him, which is why he's here. And, you know, on the backside of this, we're going to be all the better. Are we doing that to make sure that we got, we're not going to lose some folks because of, we're putting too much on them and they don't know the real why behind it? I want to make sure we're communicating on the backside.
Yeah, and so it's an excellent point, Vice President Jorgensen. We're working hard with the area superintendents and the executive directors and chiefs to get that feedback. As an example, in my monthly lunch today with CSCEA, feedback from both President and President Joe and Thad was that I'd like to invite Tamara to go to their next regional area meeting to be able to field some of the feedback of how does good intentions land in the classroom? And so we are not seeking to create edicts. We are streaking, seeking to create conversations of if you are already doing what it is we are putting a framework out, you don't need to change what you're doing to meet the exact language of what is on the framework. There is room for interpretation as long as the intent and the goal is still achieved. That is why I have five area superintendents to be able to manage that nuance, and that's why we have 50-plus very strong principals, again, to handle that nuance. It's not paint by numbers down the hallway. That's not the expectation of what happens in the classroom. The framework of best-first instruction, of leading with strong planning, to develop relationships, to get engagement, to achieve higher-order questioning is a framework that we hope was happening in every classroom in America. That does not mean you need to know that Kagan is spelt with a K and not with a C. That's not what is important. I promise you that if you are a strong planning teacher with great relationships, you are probably already getting to higher-order questioning. So no, you don't have to go backwards to go forwards, but you might have to sit through a meeting or two to help bring your peer group along to say, you've been in my classroom, you've seen me do this before. Help me help you get there. We just seek to get standardization in what the expectation is, not in the actual font selected for the slide.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean boiling it down to that level, but it is wanting to make sure that we're communicating that we're, we're on the way and, and yep.
But we're looking for that feedback, and Tamara's been a great partner and as, as I've committed to today in having Tamara join CSCEA to get the feedback of how does that feel then in the classroom? We do a lot of conversations, but most of them are, you've been invited by the superintendent or the CAO to hear about our strategy, at which point, yeah, there might be some head nodding. But we want to then hear where the heads are nodding in the other direction to make sure that we're informing to improve. The goal is to improve academic performance for our students. And again, every decision that was made up until today was the right decision because it's not something we can go backwards on. But our performance is abysmal. We cannot chase around the number to justify, and as I had a conversation with Dr. Mal Pakum, should we be putting schools forward for requests for reconsideration on their SPF? And the answer categorically is no. Yes, we might have someone that if it was a full class that took the test or the end size was greater than 20, maybe they moved from a 22 to a 25, and it changes the code that they're in. Right now, we know that we have real challenges and we have great urgency in moving forward on that.
I love it, thank you.
I like the help me, help you get there philosophy, so. I thought somebody had a question here. Did you, no, no further questions? So thank you. So you summarized it really well, Superintendent Gall. We do face some challenges out here. When you look at the district performance framework and where we landed at a district, there are a lot of areas for improvement. But there are some schools that are doing really well too, and I do want to take this opportunity to call out those schools because these schools rose over and beyond anything our expectations through these challenges of COVID, COVID, and they got an SPF of 80% or more. Bristol, Chupita, Hubbard, Scott, and Taylor, all schools that got SPF of 80% or more in this past state testing. Schools with SPF of 65% or more, Buena Vista, Edison, Freedom, Queen Palmer, Rudy, Steel, Stratton, Trailblazer at the elementary level, North, who, we had a presentation earlier this evening, North and Jenkins at the middle school level, Odyssey Echo at the high school level. So there are some schools that are knocking it out of the park in spite of all the challenges, but we got to, got but we got to, got some work to do to catch the other schools up there. And the overall takeaway for me is that this plan is strong. We are setting high expectations for everyone in this organization. There are several key benchmarks and performance indicators to track progress. And to get to that finish line, to me, three things have to happen. We got to communicate this plan with clarity, we got to execute this plan with fidelity, and we got to track progress with accountability. So if we can communicate this plan, execute this plan, and then track progress with accountability, then I am confident that we are going to make the necessary progress for improvement in this centennial here. So this plan gives us a clear focus of winning chance. And Superintendent Gall, that's why you were brought into the school district to bring about turnaround and better student academic outcomes. And we are not going to shy away from that challenge. You have the board's full support on that. And as you said, it's not just to plant the flag at the 50-yard line, it's to make sure we win the game, because planting the flag doesn't get us anywhere. We got to win the game at the end. Thank you. You have any more comments? Okay, roll call, Marcella.
Director Bankus? Aye. Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ISAVIT, the Unified District Improvement Plan, has been approved. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item F4, which is the fees of 2013 bonds?
I move that the Board of Education approve Resolution 2023-5, Authorization of Cash Deprications of the 2013 Bonds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This item was discussed as non-action item at the September 28 regular meeting. Do we have any quick comments or any feedback from the board at this point in time on this conversation? Director Nelson?
I just want to reiterate that the 2017 mill levy override in the question made a promise, the election question made a promise to the community that we would pay off the bond early, and so we are keeping that promise to the community. It's been previous boards that, and previous finance team, or current finance team, that have made sure that that's happened, and this board is following through on, on those commitments and just being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And so I think it's great. We're keeping a promise. So, good job, everybody.
Thank you. I could not have summarized it any better than what you did, Director Nelson. Seeing no further comments, roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Bankus? Aye. Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ISAVIT, that's what happens when I'm reading and I'm trying to focus on the board. The ISAVIT motion has been adopted, and we are proud that we are fiscally sound in paying off these bond debt early and providing some savings for our community in the process. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-06, National ESP Week. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please read the resolution and make a motion?
Absolutely. This is Resolution 2023-06, Education Support Professionals Week, which is October 17 through the 21st, 2022. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11, education support professionals are a valuable and essential part of Colorado's education system by providing support to our schools and facilities and assisting students in reaching their academic achievement objectives. Whereas education support professionals provide educational assistance in the classroom, maintain clean and healthy environments, sustain the efficiency and of district property, transport students safely, prepare and serve nutritious meals, support ever-changing technology, and provide customer service to students, parents, district, and community members. Whereas the educational support professionals contribute to providing a safe learning and working environment. Whereas it is appropriate for Colorado Springs School District 11 to recognize the vital role classified school employees hold in promoting student achievement and to salute these employees for their dedicated service that each one provides to the district's students and communities. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education, do hereby proclaim the week of October 17 through the 21st, 2022, as Education Support Professionals Week, and encourage parents, students, teachers, and administration to join us in recognizing and honoring these dedicated professionals. Sign today. There we go. So I move that the Board of Education approve Resolution 2023-06, recognizing October 17 through the 21st, 2022, as National.
Moved and seconded, and we have Brenda McKinney joining us. Ms. McKinney, thank you for joining us. Do you want to share a few words with us?
Yes, good evening, President Malpakum, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Gall. Just want to thank you for recognizing the ESP in the district. We have over 1,300 of them strong. Our numbers are growing. Thank you to HR and their dedicated efforts. I have a few members of our seven different work groups here tonight that want to share where, where they're at, what they're doing, how long they've been in the district, just a little bit. I myself am going on, let's see here, 24 and 3/4 years.
Is that all?
Yeah. We permitted our girls in from Harrison District 2, and both of them graduated and went on to college. One's a teacher here in the district, and the other one works in the hospitality industry. So, yeah, we have a lot of good things to say about the district. And at this time, I will let my president-elect, Kevin Cook, come up and share with you where he's from, what he does, how long he's been in here.
I'm gonna have to take you back about 18 years, if you don't mind. I started in this district as actually a rover, having to go school to school and call every day to see, you know, if I can come in and be a custodian at one of the schools. That school happened to be Mitchell High School, so my heart is, is real dear to that school. I was able to become a full-time custodian. I cried that day on my birthday because my family was able to get benefits, and, you know, that's why, that's why I came to School District 11. I was able to, I went from there to be an assistant mechanic. I went from there to be in the head mechanic, and then I was blessed with the opportunity to get, to become a plumber for the district. I achieved my residential plumbing license. I got my journalism plumbing license, and now I'm a master plumber. I got my contractor's license. I was able to achieve the aquatics facility pool operator instructor license. So I can, I can, I can certify the, the, the building managers in our district and get them. I want to be part of the CTE program. I was told that I had, that I had to pretty much do that on my own time, and, and if I have to, I will, because I, my heart is so dear to that school and, and bringing up school enrollment and things of that nature. I strongly believe in entrepreneurship and creating general wealth for your family and things of that nature. So I grew up, I didn't grow up at Mitchell, but I grew up with my heart dear to Mitchell. And the goal, the goal, my goals are constantly rising. I was blessed by Brenda to become president-elect so that I can represent those 1,300 that she's talking about, get us up to 1,400, 1,500. So I really appreciate this board for the things you're trying to accomplish for School District 11. And from the heart of the community, I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Karen Bleibom. I am the School Administrative Assistant at Buena Vista Montessori. I've been, this is my fourth year, so really, this is my first year, because the first three years were overtaken by COVID. So I'm learning along with a lot of the new staff in the district. I have, my children went to Buena Vista Homes and are now both at Coronado, and I went to Audubon, Horace Mann, and Wasson before it closed. So I have District 11 in my heart and my blood and my soul, and I am so honored to be a part of this community, and Brenda's the best. So, thank you all very much.
My name is Scott Sanders. I'm the building manager at North Middle School and been in District 11 for about 10 years. I remember when Director Bankus and myself would have one-on-one conversations about 2:30 in the afternoon of how the day went, and those were some colorful conversations, Dr. Bankus. So I'm now part of the meet and confer team and doing my part to help boost morale and training for all the building managers and custodians in the district, just like Kevin. I started off as a rover and worked my way up through the chain to where I am today. My daughter goes to North, and she is a sixth grader, and she is like, I get to see my dad every day now. So it's kind of weird, but, you know. It, it's fun. And I'm just very honored to be here and to, you know, speak on behalf of all custodians, and we're trying our best to make way and go, go forward. Two years of COVID was extremely rough, working 60 to 80-hour weeks, and I'm glad those days are now over. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you on behalf of our District 11 ESP employees. Have a fantastic week. We hope to see you out in the buildings, helping us celebrate. We hope to see celebrations all over the place, and it should be a great time. So thank you so very much, and have a very good evening.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We appreciate all that you guys do. The 1,300 employees that you are talking about, each one of you are critical and an integral component of District 11. Most generally, our students, I've always had this, and I've shared this before, most generally, our students, the first person that they see at the beginning of the day is an ESP greeting them, welcoming them at the door, or at the bus stop, and the last person they see at the end of the school day is also an ESP taking them home. So thank you for all the work that you guys do, and truly appreciate. Any comments? Director Bankus?
I want to echo those sentiments, and I can't tell you enough how important it is that our ESP personnel is, is respected and held in highest regard as, as our teachers and our administrative staff and all the rest of us who work so diligently to make sure our kids come to school and feel welcomed and supported. And I want our ESP people to also know that they are supported and that we're looking out for them, and that we want to make sure that their interests are incorporated in what our decisions are as well. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being part of the community, and thank you for being an asset. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See, oh, by the way, thank you for this, too. Okay, this is going to be great. Thank you, I appreciate that. Seeing no further comments, roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ISAVIT, the resolution has been adopted, and we look forward to our schools celebrating our ESPs. They should be doing that throughout the year, but we look forward to it especially next week. The next resolution, 2023-07, Director Ott, can you please read the resolution for the National School Lunch Week and make the motion for action item? F6.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-07, National School Lunch Week, October 10 through 14. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education. Whereas sound nutrition plays a vital role in ensuring that children reach their full potential physically, emotionally, and intellectually. Whereas there is need for continuing nutrition education in a changing world, where good health habits will last a lifetime when taught at an early age. Whereas we reaffirm our concern for the health of our district students and staff by continuing to press forward in our objective to meet the dietary guidelines for Americans in our school meal programs through serving healthy, fresh food with the D11 Good Food Project. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 participates in the National School Lunch Program at each of its schools, serving more than 22,000 lunches daily through the city of Colorado Springs, throughout the city of Colorado Springs, with the combined efforts of our principals, teachers, parents, federal, state, and local officials, and especially the 300 food and nutrition services professionals working throughout the district. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Colorado Springs, the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 10 through 14, 2022, as National School Lunch Week in District 11, and encourages all Colorado Springs residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and for the future.
Second.
Oh.
Motion hasn't been.
I am glad you're gonna second this. I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education approve Resolution 2023-07, honoring National School Lunch Week, October 10 through 14, 2022.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any thoughts or comments from board members?
Thank you. I just, I want to acknowledge the folks who spoke earlier about the importance of school lunch program and really our breakfast program as well. It is so vital to ensuring that our children are fed and that they are able to learn in our schools. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I also encourage our parent community to visit our schools and enjoy a lunch at our school cafeteria if you haven't with your student. And thank our food and nutrition staff during that time. They do a phenomenal job of serving our students and making sure that they are fed their nutritious meals so they can focus on schoolwork. With that, roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ISAVIT, the resolution has been adopted. Moving on to non-action items, the first item on the agenda, we are, we have some committees that require board approval, committee membership and charge, and the first one is the Benefits Insurance Committee Membership and Charge. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, we have several of these. If I could have all the members that are going to present their committees come line up in the front. Who else is coming, so we could...
I think first one is Director of Risk Related Activities. Is it Ms. Rikers?
Yes, Jessica, you're up first.
You're up first.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Gall. Each year, I come to you as a representative of the Benefits Insurance Committee to bring forward the annual charge and membership for board approval. I have included two attachments in your board packets this evening. The first attachment is the Benefits Insurance Committee Annual Charge, and the second is the Insurance Committee Membership. Nothing has changed in our charge from last fiscal year. However, we are in search of two committee members, one for CSEA and one for Executive Professionals. We are made up of 13 voting members, so having two members not on the committee, we are seeing an impact, and we would really appreciate if anyone had come forward to be a part of this very impactful committee. The purpose of the Insurance Committee is to monitor and recommend modifications to the district's employee benefit plan in a manner that best represents the interests of the district Board of Education and all of our members, or all of our employees, whether they participate in our health plan or not, because we do know that all of the funds for the health plan come from our general fund, which also could take away from a salary and other parts of compensation. So annually, the committee shall provide its findings, recommendations, and rationale to the superintendent, who will transmit the report and other recommendations to the Board of Education for consideration as required. The annual charge does contain seven components: Benefit Plan Design Review, Stakeholder Communications, Our Benefit Cost Trends, Wellness Initiatives, Performance Measures, Statewide Health Projects, which include our Prescription Plan Coverage, and any Benefit Health Plan Concerns. Are there any questions?
Thank you. So you said you have the vacancies. One was CSEA teacher, and what was the other one? was that other one?
One executive professional.
One executive. Oh, that's because Ms. Manchester is not?
Yes.
Okay. Director Nelson?
I was curious when the last time was that we shopped around and looked at other options, just making sure we're getting the best deal for the buck, you know, and, you know, Kaiser, Anthem Blue Cross Shield, all the other options. When was the last time we did a search?
So that is a very good question. Within our trust, we are always looking at ways that we can improve our health plan within the trust, but we do have a plan for the next, is that right? Okay, for the next year to put an RFP out, just to see what else is out there and available for our members.
So potentially moving away from the trust then?
It would potentially. Yep. They would be part of that RFP and then anyone else that would want to be a part of that as well.
So 23, 24 school year or?
That would be our hope, is to start planning that now for an RFP for the 23, 24 school year.
Okay, that sounds good. I just was Googling, what's it called now? Colorado Public Education Health Plan. I know it used to be called BEST, and I noticed on the website the list of board members, Julie Ott is one and Joe Shaw is one, and I realized the, a former school board member is the CEO of that organization, and so I just really want to make sure, I'm sure everything's on the up and up, but want to make sure that we are, the perception is acceptable to the community for how many hands are in the pot on this one and that there's not any conflict of interest. And speaking to that point, I just wonder if it would be advisable for Joe Shaw to step away from this committee. I appreciate the desire to serve and the heart to support, but I just wonder if there is a conflict of interest with him being on the board of the organization that we are utilizing. So just putting that out there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So Director Rod, I think you serve on that board and there has been some changes, which I found out about it just this morning. Is there something you want to share with the rest of the board on that regard? Director Rod?
Thank you. So the way the trust works is that members have to serve on the board, and so Dr. Shaw is serving as a member. And District 11 is one of the biggest member organizations in the trust, so we have two seats. And they, I actually have a meeting next week. The board has structurally been adapting to being a better, to help build a better organization, and as part of that, we'll be reviewing terms and things like that. So just a little tiny background there. Anyone who has any question about whether or not the trust has saved us money should talk to Glenn Gustafson, who is heavily involved with it for many years. Mary Coleman was the CEO. She is no longer. She just at the end of September stepped down, and a gentleman named Ben Taylor, who she had hired, has come on as the CEO. And before Mary, the trust operated without really having a CEO, and she was very qualified to lead us. So she was hired, and she stepped away from this board as a result. So there was no conflict of interest. I'm concerned with the hands in the pot reference. It makes it sound underhanded. This trust really works hard to serve our employees and keep costs low. So again, I would, you are welcome to attend one of our meetings. I can send you a link, and we have an annual meeting coming up, I want to say, in November. So I will send that to you, fellow board members, if you'd like to come virtually and attend. It would have to be noticed as a public meeting if more than one of you, yeah, if more than two of us are there. So any questions, feel free to ask me. Feel free to ask Joe. Feel free to ask Glenn. Feel free to ask Chris or Jessica for background on that. Thanks.
Director Rod, how many school districts are part of that trust right now?
Thanks. I don't know off the top of my head. There have been some changes recently, and Mary had been recruiting more sizable districts, but they haven't quite signed on yet. So hopefully Ben Taylor will be able to finish the job on that. And at the same time, some have stepped away because they feel that it does not serve their needs. Hopefully they'll come back because the trust itself is driving healthcare expenses down for some districts. They found that, I know, I don't want to make the meeting longer, but basically they found that the power of districts could affect local expenses. Like, we're going to give you a deal over here with this contract, and that meant that some businesses saw their business increase because they were, they offered a better deal to our trust. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Just a follow-up question, but is it safe to say we are the only large school district in this trust?
We are the largest, yes.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen?
Just to follow up on that, I too would like to see what an RFP looks like for us, just to consider, just to make sure that we are still vetting that this is the best place to go. And then with the vacancies, does it have to be a CSEA teacher or can it be a non-union member? I noticed there are only CSEA, ESP, or casas. I didn't know if non-member teachers could be there.
We can certainly look into that. It has historically been just part of CSEA.
That's interesting. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to know because I think I have a couple of teachers that wouldn't mind serving.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Director Jorgensen, I want you to expand upon the comment. Just, I mean, because the purpose is that CSEA doesn't represent all teachers in the union. I mean, all teachers in the district, yet the benefits are for everybody.
If we had more than just CSEA voice, if another teacher that wasn't a member of CSEA but wanted to help out, is there a spot for them in that vacancy? That was my question.
Thank you.
Director Nelson?
Thank you, Director Rod, for that background. And as far as the hands in the pot comment, I mean, the reality is you are looking out for the trust and you're looking out for the district. And so maybe, maybe both can be done equally well, but, you know, my job is to look out for the district, and so I'm just putting that question out there of, that's great that, that makes a lot of sense. They would want board members to be districts that are a part of the trust. That makes a lot of sense. But then I would just question, should representation on the district's behalf also be on the trust's behalf? So I just, if I'm the only one that feels that way, then so be it. I'll leave it to my fellow board members to, you know, as we are about to approve this, well, not tonight, but coming up soon, we will be approving these memberships on the committee. So just thinking about what's in the best interest of D11.
I can say something.
Director Rod?
Thank you. Oh, and I hear Director Loma saying he'd like to say something. So I will just add, I too am looking out for the best interests of the district, and in my role on the board of the trust, I can do that. I don't see them as separate. What is best for the trust is usually what's best for District 11, and where I see that it isn't, you can, believe me, I will say no to such a thing. And I'm probably one of the more talkative members in the trust with that expectation.
Director Nelson?
I was not questioning your involvement on the trust, just to clarify. I was questioning the involvement on our committee and a board, trust board member being on the committee. I don't see how you are in your position on school board. I do not see a conflict there. So just to clarify.
Director Loma?
I've always questioned this from over 10 years ago, to make up a reason because without D11, there is no trust. And so we can, you know, sometimes people say this is a trust for all districts, and that's a bad description because it is, this is a D11 endeavor, and it does, it does need to, some deeper, maybe unbiased investigation. I think it needs to be looked at. So I'm glad it was brought up. This is not something new, but there are a lot of people that work for D11 that benefit from this trust. And I'm not saying the benefits, but I'm saying they benefit. So yeah, let's just talk about this. This will be fun.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Director Loma. Seeing no further comments or questions? Are there any further comments or questions? So you heard from some of the board that there is an opportunity here to at least explore other options through an RFP. That doesn't mean we won't come back to the trust, but in this situation, it is good to compete to find out where the best plan, or it's called the Colorado Public Education Health Plan, falls with other health plans that are similarly available out there. My concern here is we have been the largest school district that have been part of this best plan for a long time, and they have tried to recruit other school districts and it hasn't happened. And is there something that we are missing out on? If we are realizing all these savings from the, being part of the best plan, why are other school districts not joining into the conversation? So it is worth exploring with an RFP and just seeing where it is and where we land. And then we can make the decision at that point in time. If this is the best plan, and we'll go with it. So if, is that something the majority of the board would like to see? I want to make sure that I get a thumbs up on that. And then we can make the decision at that point in time. If this is the best plan, and we'll go with it. So if, is that something the majority of the board would like to see? I want to make sure that I get a thumbs up on that. Yes. Whenever they want to, just we make sure that we... No, she said that it was coming up, but you are going to start this year for next year.
We would start, we would start looking at it right now and preparing the RFP, but the RFP would not go out until next year for effective date 7/1/2024, because it is a very large RFP and large process.
Okay.
That it would need to start.
If that is the timeline that you need, so be it, but what the board's will is at least to explore that RFP process and put that in motion.
Yes.
Okay. Does that capture that? Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further comments, roll call, please. Oh, this is a non-action item. With that, yeah, thumbs up to move to consent? Yes?
Does anybody else have concerns about the membership?
Membership of?
Of the board member on the trust to being on the committee?
What committee? She is not, she's not, are you part of this?
No, Joe Shaw.
Oh, Joe Shaw. I thought you were talking about Director Rod.
Joe Shaw is on this committee and he's on the board of the trust. So I just am worried that there could be a perceived conflict of interest, but if I'm the only one, then...
No, I agree.
So my ask is that maybe someone else would fill that position on the committee?
Okay.
And I am thankful that Joe is willing. Please know that.
Okay, so two board members have requested that change, and we do approve the membership of this committee? That's met. Yeah. So, yeah, we need four. Are there four board members that want this? Director Bankus?
Employee Benefits Insurance Committee. All the teachers that are listed here are all union members, and I heard a comment that said that it would be open to teaching staff who are not necessarily union members. Is that going to be somewhere in this vote that we're taking?
I think we need to change the charge to add language to reflect that there be a representative who or two that is not necessarily a member of the union.
Is there anything in the charge that says that it has all got to be union members at this time?
I believe it is in board policy, but I will double-check the language in board policy.
That all of them have to be union members?
I believe so.
Is it in the policy or as in part of master agreement or something? We don't know.
I will verify.
Okay. Could you verify that and so?
So I don't think we can vote on this then.
We are not voting on it now. It's going to come back. So I'm not, with all the questions that are there, I'm not going to move this to consent. Let's, in two weeks' time, it's going to come as action. Okay, at that time, you can try to figure out the membership of that committee and see if board policy, current board policy allows the request as non-CSEA teachers to be part of that committee. Is that what I'm hearing from the board?
That is for me.
Okay.
Yes, me too.
Okay. Director Jorgensen?
So I pulled the policy just for sake of looking at it, and number two, District Employee Benefits Insurance Committee. It does say the committee is currently structured by appointment of the employee group presidents. So there's Joe Shaw, there's your Brendan and Kevin, superintendent, six teachers, four ESP, two exec pros, and one retiree. It does not mention that they have to be CSEA members or not. So...
But from what you're telling me, the membership is appointed by the employee group presidents?
And the superintendent.
And the superintendent.
Mm-hmm. By appointment of the employee group presidents and superintendent. Yep.
So if it says six, you all could make a motion to amend that policy to make that six be four union to non-union employees to ensure equal representation or however the board wanted to proceed.
Okay, so that's a different policy. We are not voting on that policy at this time. We are just looking at, so at some point in time, if the, if it's up to the board, if it's the board's will, we got to go and revise that policy itself before we task them to do it. Right now, the board policy constraints them unless the policy says that the superintendent can do that too, then what I mean is appoint members to the committee.
We can make a friendly amendment when we pass the resolution that, the resolution will go forth pending the policy change.
Okay. Okay. Director Bankus?
Having, having that read to us, it, it sounds like that there is enough clarity that between the organization chairs and the superintendent, we can more equitably distribute the members of the committee to represent those who are not also part of the union. I don't think that there's anything in there that constricts us to...
Okay. So...
The way it's written.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that if people are interested in being part of this committee and the superintendent has by policy the opportunity to select, one more job for you, sir, that, that we proceed in the, with the understanding that that's a possibility. And so this is a, this is a suggestion, and we appreciate the work that's gone into it and the people who have stepped up to volunteer. I also think that we need to make sure that we are representing everyone, and so I would like to see us move in that direction.
Director Jorgensen?
Yeah, that was the point of reading this, is it says that the employee group presidents and the superintendent appoint, but it does not say it has to be six CSEA teachers. but it does not say it has to be six CSEA teachers, it just says six teachers. So that's, that's the flexibility you have right there. So if we have folks that would like to fill those vacancies as we're explaining tonight, please reach out to the board, and we can ask the superintendent about how to help you serve there.
Okay, so I'm trying to gather the will of the board here, okay? And what's currently in board policy, instead of trying to figure out the nuances of the policy at this time. If you take the time, along with the superintendent, if you need to consult legal counsel to get the interpretation of the policy that's in place, you heard the will of the board that they would like to see other teachers in, represented as part of the, um, part of, part of your committee. Okay? Director Art.
I think that we should just double check the master agreement as well to make sure that's not written out in there. Also, I, the board hasn't voted on this, or, you know, you've just heard from some board members. So it's not the will of the board, per se, it's an interest in some board members.
I asked for a thumbs up to see, see what they wanted, and there was four people that gave a thumbs up on this thing. So I'm, that's why I'm asking them to go and explore other options out there. Are there any other that are opposed to having non-CSEA teachers on this committee? Would you rather, are there only, yeah, are there only, is there only interest in CSEA teachers? Which is what, um, I want to see what the interest of the board is. Do you want to see non-CSEA teachers on this committee, or is this only for CSEA teachers? What's the will of the board? So is this only for CSEA teachers, Director Art, is that what I'm hearing from you? Yes.
I think that the union, you know, it's, it's a representative group that chooses to be representative of teachers in general and that entire employee group. So I am inclined to support CSEA having those seats.
Okay. Is that what the rest of the board? Okay, Director Daniels?
I support CSEA.
Okay. Okay.
Be sure where they're active, they're involved.
Okay. Uh, Director Nelson, you want, uh?
I would like to see opportunities for teachers that are not part of CSEA.
Okay. Okay, and Director Bankers?
I, we, we sit up here and we talk about how we are an inclusive community. We talk about how it is that when our doors open, we welcome all of our children. And that should extend also to our adults. So whether you're a union member or not a union member, you should have a voice. So I would like to see that membership opened up so that we have a broader voice in making these decisions.
And I, I heard the same thing from Director Loma, I think.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's the will of the board, so there you go, okay? Um, please look at the other options and come back to the board. This will remain as an action item next to, two weeks back when it comes back. And Superintendent, you also got some direct, direction from the board. Um, the, this, the next non-action item, District Personnel Performance Evaluation Advisory Council Membership in Charge. Tanya.
Good evening, how is everyone? I'm trying to stay awake here. Um, as I do every year, I'm bringing forward to you the membership for the Personnel Advisory Committee, which is a requirement under Colorado Revised Statute twenty-two-nine-one-oh-eight, which is our educator effectiveness law. Um, our membership, after you approved personnel recommendations this evening, now has two vacancies that we will need to look for. We will need to find an elementary principal rep for our committee, and then we will also need to find a human resources director for our committee. Just as a reminder, the charge of the committee is to oversee and to evaluate the fairness and effectiveness of our evaluation system for certified employees in alignment with state law and expectation. And just as, uh, like a segue into the future, this committee will be doing a lot of work this school year because we have a new educator effectiveness law that will come into effect in August for this coming school year.
Director Turgens.
Will part of this charge of evaluating the fairness and all that with the new legislation, will that potentially look at what we've been doing at certain schools, like Mitchell and other things with interrelated reliability, in drafting a new teacher evaluation system that maybe steps away from RANDA and gives our teachers a little bit more of what they're looking for as far as that coaching and, and feedback?
So Senate Bill twenty-two-seventy, which is the new law coming in, has a specific component in it that addresses evaluator training around observation, coaching, and feedback specifically. It just came out of a state meeting today where that was a, about a two-hour discussion on a six-hour day around that the state will most likely be defining standards for the training that evaluators will need to go through and show competency in. And it is focused on the, the observation and feedback cycles that, that we should be engaging in as part of the process. So I think we'll see that come in as an expectation under the new law.
But you'd say we're already a little bit ahead of that curve?
Correct.
With what we've already started?
Correct. We attempt, we have been working for two years
Yeah.
to move our focus towards making sure that we have systems in place and support in place for our evaluators as they lean into that work more heavily.
Okay, and is the end goal of the charge here to potentially, if it's better than RANDA, which I would assume it could be, to move to a new system for teacher, teacher evaluation?
So just a clarification of language, RANDA is the housing system for our evaluations. The state model evaluation system is the actual tools that we use.
Okay.
RANDA is just a platform to house it. In Senate Bill twenty-two-seventy, we will see some, some changes to the evaluation tools and processes. So there will be a new pathway for highly effective, um, teachers who have shown highly, highly effective outcomes in their evaluation for three consecutive years. Um, we will see some additional rubrics that are more specialized. Um, no final decisions, but rubrics that we've discussed are special education, teacher rubrics, uh, library technology educator rubrics. So those things are still being defined and, and looked at. Um, the state is in the process of, um, our first set of focus groups in this month, and then we'll move into some work groups and some additional focus groups. I do have a little bit of a, of a insight in that I sit on the, um, which is what, I sit on the Educator Effectiveness Implementation Practitioner Implementation Council, which is the advisory committee to the Educator Effectiveness Division at CDE. And so we're, we're getting in all the information and then processing out and trying to look to see what that looks like and how that looks in our system. But it does make some significant changes. It also significantly changes the focus to the professional practices component in that that'll be seventy percent of the overall score coming forward in the evaluation.
Because it was fifty.
Correct.
Okay.
And just to address your item, more and more districts have moved away from their own systems and moved more towards the use of the state model evaluation system. Um, the latest one to look at that was Douglas County, and it was cost prohibitive to them because they use quite a few of their own specialized rubrics.
Sure.
Um, but they also have just gone through a reevaluate whether or not they would move to the state model system.
Okay, good, you got your work cut out for you, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Director Bankers.
I thought I like hit the jackpot.
Um, and this may, um, I just need a piece of clarification. When, when we're talking, so this is all about teachers and their effectiveness in the classroom teaching kids. Can you help me, um, understand how or where our EAs and our, um, special ed, um, teachers aides fit into training and evaluation? And I don't know if that falls within your purview or?
Oh, it does. Um, so in District Eleven, our performance, our Personnel Advisory Committee, while required for state law for our licensed evaluations, is also the committee that we use to design our evaluation systems as a whole. So three years ago, um, in, well, in the nineteen-twenty school year, we revamped all of our educational support professional evaluation tools and brought them into an online platform along with our executive professional evaluation tools. In that process, I worked very closely with the ESP Council Office to ensure that the rubrics that we were going to be utilizing made, um, they were important and effective for the specialized roles that our ESP are in. One of those rubrics that we brought online at that time was an instructional assistant rubric, and it was based on, um, exemplar rubrics out of national organizations around what those paraprofessional practices should look like as a partner to a teacher in the classroom.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Um, there is a minor correction that I want to suggest to you, Ms. Nash. Uh, in the document that is attached to board docs, it references policy BDFA. There is no policy BDFA, I think it means policy BDF, and the link doesn't work either. So, uh, you may want to correct that, just removing the A at the end of it.
Thank you.
And also, when I looked at that policy BDF, which, um, Director Jorgensen went to at the last conversation we had last agenda conversation, it says in reference to this policy, the membership consists of one parent guardian and one person who does not have a child in school. Does your membership meet that at this time?
It does.
Okay. You have a parent guardian?
Yes.
In there, and also one who's not a membership, who, who doesn't have a child in the school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, can this be moved to consent? Okay, moving on.
Director Bailey and Velvet?
Director, DAC membership in charge.
Fighting for the microphone.
Good evening, President Mel Packham, Board Directors, and Mr. Gall. Um, we come before you, I come before you with Velvet Stefanik, the District Accountability Committee President, or Chairwoman. Chairwoman, and she will, uh, present all of the committee members for the various DAC accountability committees and subcommittees.
Yeah. So, um, there is, there's a couple of corrections from what's on the board docs, there's two. So we had three openings in our committee, but, um, we found a community member to fill our ELL community, and then we also found, um, a middle school administrator. So we're still just looking for a, a high school teacher. Um, this, the, in June, this came before you just to approve, uh, the chair and the vice chair, and at that time you did. Um, and, and then we also, um, under Dr. Gaudich, had added a, a charge at that time, a possible charge, because the DAC last year had, had talked about, um, concerns with declining enrollment. After some conversations with Mr. Gall and, um, the President Mel Packham, some, we, we decided that that did not need to be a charge for the DAC this year. So the, the charges that you see for the DAC, the full DAC, um, are the charges that we've had in the past. Um, they haven't changed, it's still, um, I mean, they're, I, I think, I think it, it changed in June where we took out COVID, um, some COVID language, but those charges have been, are the same that we had in the past. Um, uh, I want to really commend Lauren Walker, who is the vice chair, and has done a lot of work on membership. She really tried to get parent membership filled first, uh, and, and did a great job doing that. Um, I'll also say for the other two, the other two subcommittees, the Budget Subcommittee and the Accreditation Subcommittee, Mary Clausen, the accreditation Subcommittee Chair, and Amanda Huber, the Budget Subcommittee Chair, has done a great job getting more parent involvement in those subcommittees. Um, in the past, accreditation has had a very hard time getting parents to stick with the committee. It's a lot of work, a lot of coming up to speed. Um, and I know Amanda looked to and, at, at the Budget Subcommittee, and because those committees, really, the majority of those people should be parents. Um, so it, there's been a lot more work, you can look on, on those subcommittees, that there are more parent, there's more parent involvement, um, there. Uh, I know also the Budget Subcommittee did add, um, some more specifics for, um, uh, requesting and reviewing summary reports on the status of any performance metrics, so off, of off-cycle things, so that was added into their charge. But the Accreditation Subcommittee charges are the same as they have been in the past. Um, I don't know, do you have any, any additional questions?
Any questions or comments or feedback to Mr. Panik? Director Art.
Thank you, just looking at the location list, if you will, it's very heavy on north. So as you fill any additional spots, maybe they should come from somewhere else in the district.
I, yeah, I know that, and sometimes, like, parents that have been very involved before, like, I know one of those parents was an elementary parent before, and it just happened that her son choiced into north. Um, yeah, and we do try to, we do try to reach out to all the areas. Um, it, and I, you know, I, I agree with you, it's, um, we did, I think Lauren did have some choices where she had some parents who came from different locations, and then we, we had to, um, you know, choose to make sure we got people from the east side and then the west side as well. But those two from the middle school were from last year too, so they didn't change.
Well, I appreciate their willingness to serve, just hope you can spread out the joy.
And we, and it is, that is something we do try to watch.
Director Nelson.
Uh, the board received an email of someone requesting to be on the Budget Subcommittee, so will that also be updated before it comes to us as consent?
Uh, yes, so, I mean, it, yes.
Okay, thanks.
It will, and, and know that you, you approved this, but as things happen during the year, people drop off and we add people, um, as the year goes on as well. Awesome.
Okay, I see, uh, Ms. Amanda Huber there too. You don't have anything to add right now, you, thank you for your service to, on the Budget Subcommittee. So, uh, you've talked about the three, uh, the main DAC and the DAC Accreditation and the DAC Budget. So we looked at three items on the non-action, one after the other. First, looking at the DAC, uh, the DAC main membership, uh, and charge. Are we okay moving that to consent? Okay, DAC Accreditation Membership in Charge? And DAC Budget? Okay, all three items have been moved to consent and charge, thank you for your service.
I just wanted to be clear again, so when community members or teachers or parents, I said teachers, yes, um, want to be a part of that, then they contact the chair of each of those committees, and that's how they get on, or?
Well, so.
What's the process, I don't know what the process is.
So the vice chair is the membership committee chair as well. Um, so she, normally it goes through her, but sometimes the subcommittee chairs do, um, they do reach out to the subcommittee chair. Um, I was telling you that, you know, we've had some problems with parents dropping off, and, and so I know Marion has done a lot of work where if there's a parent who is interested, she talks to them and explains to them the amount of work and, and tells them, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time to come up to speed. I'm willing to help you do what you need to do. And that, and I know that's what Amanda has done as well. Um, so it, it is reaching out and, and talking, but, and I, and the Budget Subcommittee has, um, I think they have a, 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 like, a, I can't think of the word. They have like a fill thing that you fill out, but, you know, most of the time it is, if you're willing. There are certain times, like this year, we really wanted to focus on, on getting more parents. So we weren't necessarily, we don't want to be heavy on, um, you know, other areas sometimes. I mean, it all just depends on what is available, but, um, we want, we made a concerted effort to get more parents on those subcommittees this year. to get more parents on those subcommittees this year.
What's spurring my, if, if this district decides to do a bond issue, um, and we've had lengthy conversations around how our facilities get funded, which is not sparkly, um, I think it helps to have community on our committees so they understand the limited amount of, um, revenue that we have to put into our, our buildings as well. And so I, I don't have a number in mind, I don't know, I don't know how it's balanced between teachers and community. I just know that I think we need to think of ways in which to engage our community so that they know, um, just how important it is for maybe a, a Mill Levy override or a bond issue, because our generalized revenue coming in really don't, goes back to teachers in school and, um, to the classroom.
So I know the full DAC, we have, we have it in our regulations, what the, like, the amount of parents, the, the different roles that are filled. At the subcommittee level, we do not have that, right?
Um, we do have-
Other than parents should be the majority.
Right, the majority.
We, we have a rule about, about parents being-
Wait, 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 I gotta write, I gotta write. So parents, uh-
Parents have to be the majority on the Budget Subcommittee and the Accreditation.
Thank you.
So.
That helps.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that, that is one of the concerns with the Budget Subcommittee, when we're, we're filling positions, oftentimes, parents will go from a position of being a parent, and then that child might graduate, and then they need to fill one of those community member positions. I, I don't always keep track of when people have kids graduate, so that's been something I've been a little bit late on trying to catch up to. I think the other thing to consider with the Budget Subcommittee especially, um, sometimes we have difficulty meeting quorum, so it's very important that if members are gonna sign up for this, um, that they are in attendance so that we can vote, because without meeting quorum, we can't really get anything done.
And quorum is the majority of the membership list?
There's a, there's a number that they use. I know some people aren't voting members, and some are voting members, so they, the number changes to, to get the number that we need for quorum.
Okay.
And you're meeting, uh, are you meeting online, virtual?
We're doing mostly virtual meetings, uh, with a few in-person meetings a year. We're not gonna do a hybrid.
Okay.
Yeah, so Accreditation meets online as well. Uh, the, well, the plan is maybe twice a year, we might be in person, but, um, because of the size of the community, the online meeting works very well. The DAC, uh, meets in person, it is a hybrid meeting, we have some online, but it, we have found, really, it's, it's better to have an in-person meeting so that we can develop the relationships that we need to have. Um, when people are online, a lot of times you don't, you don't know a face, you don't, you don't know who, who, um, that relationship doesn't get built to get the information from them.
Director Nelson, you have-
Uh, just circling back, that it's the DAC sub-chair Lauren Walker that people should reach out to if they want to join, is that what you said?
That the vice chair, they should reach out to Lauren Walker, yes, if they have an interest.
Just because it's only your contact information that's on the D eleven website.
And that's fine, they can reach out to me and I will direct them to Lauren Walker. That's fine. Or, or they can reach out to Trudy Tool, who is the, um, is Phoebe's-
Administrator.
And, well, she helps with the DAC, she, and she would direct them to Lauren as well.
Okay.
I mean, it's better for, for me to know as well, um, but they, I do direct them to Lauren.
Otherwise, we should put that on the website of the options, but if you're good with it being just you, then it's great the way it is.
Yeah, usually that works.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to the, uh, next non-action agenda, Mill Levy Override Oversight Committee, and Ms. Odom, you're going to talk about this.
Good evening, Board of Education. So just a little overview, Mill Levy Overview, um, Override Committee, uh, is comprised and oversees both the two thousand MLO and the twenty seventeen MLO. And reading from their particular, um, uh, charge in their documentation, their governance plan, ballot initiative three B that was approved by the voters in November two thousand, and ballot issue three E approved by the voters in November of twenty seventeen, called for the formation of the Citizens Oversight Committee to monitor implementation performance and use of up to forty, or sixty-nine million dollars annually in new MLO funding. Uh, committee members are charged with monitoring the MLO spend plan progress, make recommendations regarding any program modifications, commit to a minimum of two years and up to eight years of service, attend regular meetings on an average of once a month, familiarize themselves with the spending plan and the D eleven strategic plan and mission, and participate in periodic public briefings to inform the community about implementation progress. We have a new committee chair, this, right now, just got elected, her name is Nicole Ubell. She had a conflict, a scheduled conflict tonight, so couldn't be here, and the vice is having, is on convalescent leave. So it's me representing the committee on behalf of the chair and the vice chair. They do work, um, in collaboration with DAC Budget, and that, uh, right now, there is a call out for additional membership. When it first started, there was only over twenty-seven members, and there is openings. So if you are listening and you are interested in helping the district work and oversight on the, on your, what your tax dollars are going for, please feel free to reach out to myself or to any board member. Uh, board members can appoint and assign to this committee, and that concludes my overview. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, uh, we do want to see the membership, there are a lot of vacancies in this committee, so hopefully we can reach out and, um, uh, increase membership, uh, and we value what this committee is doing, um, uh, because we need to be transparent with our community how we are spending our taxpayers' dollars. Director Art?
Yes, I, well, you, you addressed this partly, and it really, if you look at the numbers in the, the DAC Budget Subcommittee versus the MLO, and we're just a couple members short officially in the, in the Budget Subcommittee, but yes, twenty-three members is what I think we were supposed to have, um, in our MLO Oversight Committee, so definitely have that need there. Thank you.
Well, I remember when this committee was first formed, eighty people were there, and there was a waiting list, and, uh, then the board at that time had whittled it down to twenty-three, and I don't know what happened. Uh, if we can reach out to the remaining that applied, and I don't know, there are ways that we can, uh, and I know the work that this committee does, it's looking at a lot of numbers and the budget work, so, uh, it's, uh, time-consuming work, and, uh, I appreciate all these committee members who are willing to, uh, ensure that, um, through their feedback, make sure that we are being judicious stewards of taxpayers' dollars.
So, I, I, I just want to offer that at the end of this year, engagement is certainly on my, um, accountable items to deliver, and we are thinking very hard of new innovative ways to bring the community more to fore to both the needs, the wants, and the reporting of the district. But I do think the board should consider at the end of this next year to evaluate the number of committees and the number of people that it is asking to be supportive in these committees. To hear that we have active members who seek to be influential to the direction of the board, yet they struggle to get a quorum, says that we have a demand issue, that we might be asking too much of our community in this methodology. And so one of the initiatives that I have brought in on engagement is to develop new tools that we can be taking input and influence from our community without maybe having to ask them to commit the enormous amount of time and level of expertise to deliver. Again, with all the respect and thankfulness for the work that went for the Fund Ballot Task Force, that was a month's worth of work, bust just by volunteers to come into that space to be able to offer those options. And so we have gone through half a dozen committees here that we are giving charges for, which if I just said each one of them was somewhere between six and ten people, you're at, you know, thirty-six to sixty members of the community that you're asking to commit enormous amounts of time, where we really want our parents are involved in our schools. And as Velvet reminds me all the time, we still don't have full participation at the school level, and PTO and PTA will also echo the same piece to me, that we still don't have a parent rep for every one of our buildings. So we seek, and I will be accountable to delivering on this, but I think at some point we might need to evaluate what is the ask and whether or not it is attainable.
Thank you. That's a good point to consider as we proceed further. Is this, um, uh, okay to move to consent? Thumbs up to move to consent? Okay. So the last item on the agenda is, thank you. Uh, last item on the non-action agenda is, uh, the school improvement plans for two schools. I think one is a priority improvement school and one is a turnaround school, and we have, uh, some staff members and the administration from those respective stools, respective schools that have, um, patiently waited that. I first turn it over to you.
Great. Thank Dr. Dr. Mel Packham and the board and to the community, particularly to the staff members that have stayed for this most critical part of our work. Uh, the good news is, is, uh, we're getting good at this. Uh, the bad news is, is we're getting good at this. So you'll see a very similar set of slides that we used as we did the UIPs for the schools that were on the list, uh, pre-COVID. Um, we are taking a very aggressive stance, and as I commented earlier, in not asking for reconsideration for schools to come off the list, because we think it is communicating with urgency our need to actually make the changes that we need to be able to get there. Uh, our team is working very quickly, very hard to get there. I want to acknowledge my own faux pas in missing the opportunity to get DAC, um, feedback on the UIPs, these first two that are coming forward. We have rectified that with Velvet and Marion and the rest of the members of the DAC, to be able to be, ensure that we are gathering that community input, um, as we seek to solve the problems collectively together. And so I believe, uh, Dr. Mel Packham, as we provide these, we've decided that we're gonna stack them all up and then, uh, vote in, for consent en masse. But our plan is two UIPs a week until we get through the seventeen schools that we need to permit.
Yeah, um, exactly what, um, uh, Superintendent Gall said about this, uh, it's two, uh, school improvement plans are going to come at a board meeting as non-action item, and then eventually in December, we are going to approve all of them as an action item. Okay? So it's, this is not going to come action two weeks from now. We may have to, because our board policy somewhere, or board operating manual says that an item that comes as non-action would go immediately to action two weeks from now, we may have to take a motion to table this until, uh, December meeting. Um, yeah, but let's listen to what they have to present first, and is it Adams that's going first?
Yeah, I'll, um, Area Superintendent Brian Relic, please come forward with, uh, principals.
Yes. Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Gall, thank you very much. I just want to mention two quick things, because I know it's late, and this is the main work that you all have been waiting for, so thank you. I also want to acknowledge, um, the DAC Accreditation Team and apologize to them. Um, we do have their input, and we're very excited about that feedback, and we'll be adding that in under Mr. Gall's direction and guidance. Um, I first want to say, these are two dedicated groups of professionals that work very closely with their families and communities for one reason, that's their students. I've had the privilege to work with Adams for two years now, this is my first year working with Columbia, and I've seen nothing but professionalism. Is there work to do? Yeah. I'm gonna own that. We realize that, you'll see that tonight, you'll hear that tonight, but what you won't see tonight is the day-to-day work of the narrative that you're gonna hear in the story they're about to tell. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Superintendent Gall and board members, and I'd like to, at this time, welcome Mrs. Michelle Slider, who's the principal at Adams, to begin her presentation. Maricela, thank you for getting that queued up.
All right. Well, good evening, and I want to thank you for this opportunity for Adams to share our one plan with you. Um, so as you know, we, we developed this one plan during the One Plan Symposium, and at that time in May, it was myself and my assistant principal, and teachers, and, um, we also had some ESP staff and district support. And since then, this has been through, uh, you know, we've looked at it, we've revised it, we've shared it, and we've shared it with our staff, with our SAC, and then last week, we had our district One Plan check-in, and so that's kind of where we are in the process right now. Okay, so starting with, um, the first piece of this is our data story. So when we built this one plan, we reviewed all of our data, starting with, um, the five essentials data over a three-year period. And what we've seen is an up, some ups and downs. And so in twenty twenty, Adams was partially organized for improvement, then the next year, we became organized for improvement, and this past year, we slipped back slightly, and we were moderately organized for improvement. So when analyzing that set of data, some of the highlights that stood out to us around the five essentials were, from twenty-one to twenty-two, a supportive environment stayed strong, and to us, that's a really positive highlight, because that's great feedback from our students about their relationships that they feel with their teachers, and that they feel safe for learning to happen. Two areas that we noticed slipped somewhat from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two are around ambitious instruction, it went from strong to neutral, and collaborative teachers went from neutral to weak. So that speaks a little bit into what we're going to be working on, classes that are challenging and engaging, and teachers collaborating to promote professional growth. The next piece of our data, um, is the Galileo District Benchmark. So this slide shows, uh, end-of-year performance, third through fifth grade, and for both ELA and math, we did see a decrease in performance from ELA going from fifty-two in twenty-one to forty-eight percent meeting or expecting their growth, meeting or exceeding expected growth, sorry about that. And for math, we saw a decrease in performance in Galileo at the end of the year, going from about fifty-three percent to fifty-one percent in twenty twenty-two. The next set of data that we looked at, um, was our Acadience Performance Data over three years. So really looking back, and, you know, I'm blessed with the staff where we do have some veterans at Adams who have been there prior to my tenure there, which, this is the third year now, and were part of some of the successes that the school was having with the upward trends with student achievement in twenty nineteen. And so that, of course, was pre, prior to the pandemic, and so we use it just for comparison purposes, but really, as we're honing in on this, we were looking specifically at twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. So this shows the percentage of our students who were proficient, meaning they were at benchmark or well above benchmark, and we saw growth of about fourteen percent from beginning of the year to the end of the year in twenty twenty-one. Last year, we saw about eighteen percent growth. We finished the year with fifty-one percent of our students at or above benchmark on Acadience. Just a side piece of data is that we're currently starting this school year at forty percent The next set of data is around CMAS, and so this, I know there's a lot of pieces here in front of you, this is just the scale score showing achievement, the achievement piece on CMAS for the past three years for our third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade ELA. And in twenty, last year, our academic achievement ELA percentile rank was thirteen percent, which put us in the does-not-meet-expected-performance category. And, um, as we can see from each of these grade-level bands or charts, we have been pretty consistently below performance on, even with where the state is, from, um, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade over the years. The next piece outlines it by proficiency levels, and so as you can see from this, a lot of our students were clustered in levels three, two, and one, with only twenty-eight percent of our kids meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations. So ELA literacy is a primary focus. Around math, CMAS math means scale score, our achievement data last year showed academic achievement, our math percentile rank was only eight percent. That was a high level of concern for us, because of course it means that we did not meet expected, um, performance. And we can see similar data trends here, that our math achievement is also an area of concern, where each year, we are falling below the levels of the state in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Two things I wanted to point out, for ELA- Two things I wanted to point out, for ELA, last year, our kindergarten through third grade implemented wonders as our core curriculum. Last year, our fourth and fifth grade implemented wit and wisdom. This year for ELA, all grade levels are now on one curriculum doing wonders because our fourth and fifth grade teachers in August made that decision to move forward doing what's best for our kids. And, you know, I was really proud of them and moving to wonders so we could have alignment across our building. For math, last year, all of our school was working, we all were in year-one implementation of Eureka Math. This year, of course, school-wide, we are in year-one implementation of Eureka Math Squared. So, just a little background on what we're using for core curriculums there. So, looking at our SPF, we are at a 32.5 score, which puts us on a turnaround plan. This in academic achievement has us at a rating of does-not-meet. Academic growth, we are at approaching. This again is a high level of concern for our staff, for our school. And with all of this data in mind, what we are identifying as our priority performance challenges are low growth and achievement in both ELA and math. The data's been pretty clear about that. There are wins, there are trends that we're seeing that are trending in the right direction, but overall, this is our priority challenge. And in response to that priority performance challenge, our staff is going to increase our collaborative practices and our collective responsibility, how we're responding, the instruction we're delivering, and how we're uniting as a staff to make these good things happen for our kids, to raise achievement. So, our plan to act on the data, and this is a piece where I want to talk a little bit about our North Star. I know that some of you have had the opportunity to visit Adams. And I hope that when you visited Adams, you have seen and felt very much what I felt when I was fortunate to join the team a few years ago, that Adams is a very special place. It's a very positive culture. We have a staff with a heart of gold. They're there for kids. They're there for each other. And so, when we talked about our North Star, some words that came up a lot were around relationships, were around community, and commitment. And that community isn't, it's a community of educators working together, trying to do our very best for kids. And so, we know that in our school, our kids come to us with a variety of academic needs, social-emotional needs, and because of our geography, a lot of different needs based on demographics and home lives. And our staff is very committed to working for every child. And so, our North Star is really that commitment to supporting the whole, sorry, the commitment to supporting the whole child, but taking it that step further and having high expectations for all of our learners, believing that they are all capable of growth because we know they are and we believe that. One of the things that we felt was a great highlight with the CDE Diagnostic Visit that was done in May at Adams, that was an accolade from CDE. They recognized through talking to some of our staff members that our staff communicates a shared responsibility for students and each other. So, really, those high expectations and commitment to our students, that's our North Star. So, our major improvement strategy, our first one is around best-first instruction and engagement. The root cause for that, of course, is low levels of student engagement. We have seen our student levels, student achievement levels continue to decrease. And the impacts have been brought about by low attendance and behavior challenges. And also, according to our CDE Diagnostic Review, student engagement was also an area that they highlighted, should be an area we focus on as an area of need. So, our theory of action is to implement professional development focused on engagement strategies, getting our students engaged in their learning, and then student achievement will improve. So, we're already taking steps, of course, making this happen. So, our action steps is providing professional development for our staff around what is best-first instruction focused on engagement and working through those pieces. Another area is that five teachers, along with myself and my assistant principal, are part of the District 11 Kagan Cohort 2. We will be attending the third day of that on Monday. And it's been a very worthwhile thing and we're bringing those practices back to share with the whole staff. And then our whole staff will be trained in Kagan next year. So, we're excited about that opportunity. Our Kagan structures are shared with our staff at staff meetings and we review those during PLC in an effort to grow practice across our building. Our learning walk form that myself and my assistant principal utilize, it's focused on best-first instruction to help us identify trends positive and opportunities across our building. And weekly lesson planning, we've done a lot of work this year to really align it with consistent expectations, specifically around making sure we are targeting the standards, following the quarterly overviews, that we're intentional and clear about a learning objective and that we have an assessment so we can measure how our students performing while instruction is happening. Our teachers, we're using Title I funds to give our teachers opportunities to observe other teachers. And that has come out of a desire from our staff to see best practices in action. And so, we have prioritized those funds and those visits are going to start soon. And we've developed a protocol that teachers will use whether they're observing in the building or going to another school around what are those things they're seeing that are best practices specifically aligned to our major improvement strategies. And then that ask is that they bring those back to share with the staff in staff meetings and PLCs so we can grow practice. The observation, feedback, and coaching cycle that we are using this year with our staff provides coaching and support about engagement strategies specifically. We're asking teachers to be intentional in their planning, building those strategies in, and then we are being intentional in our coaching to provide feedback around those. We want to thank the Board for the opportunity to host an after-school program. We are so excited. It's up and running. Enrollment is literally building by the day because our families are very excited about this. And it's a great opportunity for us to engage our families. We're seeing them take advantage of that. And I know it's not on the slide, but I feel it fits here. But we also, as part of that after-school program, our teachers are hosting after-school enrichment clubs. And we currently have 140 of our 300-plus students involved in those. And so, we have a high number of our kids sticking around after-school to be engaged in a safe and supportive environment. So, thank you for the funds for that after-school program. We are also working with engagement specialists in the district to provide professional development opportunities and ongoing social-emotional learning PD for our staff. And that's coming from the data, but it's also coming at the request of our staff. And community and business partnerships, we're going to utilize those to the fullest extent we can this year to support our students' families and classrooms. Okay, all right. So, our second major improvement strategy is around teacher-to-teacher trust or collective responsibility. Our root cause for this is a lack of teacher-to-teacher trust. And that was evidenced by significant staff turnover that also included administration for the past three school years. There's a need in our school to build a culture of trust and we see that in how collective responsibility has been measured in the Five Essentials Survey over the past couple of years. So, our theory of action is to increase a sense of responsibility for student development, school improvement, and professional growth because we believe that when we collaborate and define and implement coherent practices around best-first instruction and social-emotional learning and making sure we have high expectations, then teacher-to-teacher trust will be strengthened. So, some action steps we're taking include, our building leadership team is collaborating about school-wide schedules, opportunities, and processes to increase collective efficacy, including intentionally building a master schedule that includes an intervention block for each grade level and that very purposeful planning and scheduling. We have four of our grade-level teams participating in professional learning community coaching with Dr. Ewald through District 11 and using Empower Funds. Last year, our first grade and fourth grade team worked with Dr. Many. It was a really positive experience. This year, we were fortunate to bring on our third grade and fifth grade team. So, we now have four of our sixth-grade level teams engaged in PLC coaching. We've also, or I should say, our first grade and fourth grade team was very instrumental in developing a Strategy Implementation Guide, that's called a SIG, to support school-wide PLC practices. And what that really is, is it's a rubric of best practices that guide PLC work, that PLC teams can be reflective on as we try to be really tight in our practices to get the biggest bang for the buck out of PLCs and achievement from kids. So, as a result of that, we also have school-wide expectations for PLCs that the time spent is during the day. That was something that the staff, they voted, we were going to embed this during the day. So, Thursdays are our PLC day and that time is committed to focus time on professional collaboration. And we are offering professional development opportunities focused on social-emotional learning to support improved academic success. And our staff has been collaborating to develop and put into place some systems and processes just like our professional learning community work and school-wide student expectations. Having things consistent for our kids, having processes so that we as a staff are all on the same page, ensuring those high expectations for kids. So, some examples of that, we call them our Wolf Pride Expectations. And our staff had such a commitment to it that the staff decided that the expectations we were going to have for our kids, as a staff, that became our social contract. So, everyone on the staff signed these as an agreement that as a staff, this is how we're going to do business in the best interest of our kids. So, I thought that was a pretty powerful statement on the behalf of the staff of how we were going to work together this year. So, our plan to deliver. So, around major improvement strategy number one, a lot of these, again, are things that are already being implemented and this is how we're progress monitoring how we're doing. So, our building leadership team meets monthly to review progress on our ONE Plan. We just actually met yesterday. The piece that we looked at was around discipline data. And we had our BLT give some, a lens into that and some feedback. And so, we will continue meeting each month. Our staff is engaged in best-first instruction modules. We finished standard one around standards, sorry, module one around standards literacy. On Monday, our staff will engage in module two, the six phases module. Our Kagan structures are being introduced at monthly staff meetings and reviewed during our weekly PLCs so that we are keeping Kagan at that forefront and sharing best practices. And again, five teachers and myself and my assistant principal are part of the Kagan cohort and receiving that professional development. Our learning walk data of practices we're seeing collectively across the school is also information that is shared monthly with the building leadership team. There's a slight edit from this because we talked with our building leadership team about it and this is actually going to be data we're going to share monthly as a whole staff with that intent of this is something we're all working on. Let's share it so everybody knows the trends that are going on around the building. So, that will be our plan moving forward. And then, that quarterly review of progress on our ONE Plan will be shared with our SAC. And so, they have, I shared the school performance framework. I shared the initial ONE Plan and the plan is to share that with them, at least quarterly, how we're doing on our ONE Plan. Around major improvement strategy number two, our implementation and progress monitoring. Again, our building leadership team will meet monthly to review our progress on the ONE Plan. We have four grade-level teams participating in professional learning community coaching with Dr. Ewald. Our PLC teams, every grade-level team, will reflect quarterly on the progress they're making on our Strategy Implementation Guide. So, again, that's that rubric for the best practices around PLC. And we're looking for growth. Are we improving in our practices? And that started with a self-reflection and then mid-year, they'll do a middle-of-the-year reflection, how are we doing, end-of-the-year, to determine progress that has been made. Our PLC team meeting agendas will show implementation of school-wide tight and loose expectations for PLCs. So, those collective agreements of when we're in PLCs, we're really going to drill down and make it that purposeful time. And we're partnering with the D11 Engagement Specialist to offer professional development through the year. So, some examples of that, Sarah Wilson with D11 Engagement. She came out and provided some professional development for our whole staff on regulating student behaviors. Again, this came out of a request from some of our teachers based on trends they were seeing and just wanting to have some resources. So, she was great. She came and did that and made an offer to come back. And then, she and Jessie Johnson came and they've been one day so far where they were just available during the lunch block for teachers to just drop in, in a non-evaluative format, to have a thought partner, a problem-solving partner. Here's a problem of practice I'm struggling with. Can you talk to me about it? Can you come in and see it? And they've been very accommodating with wanting to provide support and they come back later this month for another day of that. And we're also going to be utilizing them as part, as another thought partner on our MTSS team when we're looking at interventions specifically to support some of those behaviors or social-emotional needs. Okay? We've also benefited from central supports, including bi-weekly meetings that I get to have with Mr. Relic. Our quarterly ONE Plan Review Meetings, we just had our first last Monday. We'll be doing quarterly Eureka Math Learning Walks with Paul Bungy. We're utilizing Empower Funds to enhance the work we're able to do around literacy and math, meeting with our area instructional coach, doing monthly meetings and learning walks with Tanya Nash, our educator effectiveness facilitator. And I already mentioned that we're working with our Student Support and Engagement Department and with D11 Engage. So, that brings us to the end of our action steps and those kind of things. What I want to leave you with is really, I mentioned a little bit about our staff and about our team. And, you know, when we got this, when we, we had charted a course. We were going to be very tight, very cohesive, doing what's best for kids. And when we received the word about our status on the SPF, it was a blow to our staff. And I know you weren't there to see the reactions, but they carry this and they care. And I see them working really hard and I hear from them. In fact, some of them are even sitting here, they say it every day, we're going to do this. We're going to get better. We can grow. We can do this. And I feel from them that that belief's there, but I also feel from our staff that that urgency's there. And they know we're accountable for this. I know we're accountable for this, but we're working hard on this. And so, we're celebrating some of the successes with the things that have already been implemented. We're on a path right now and we're going to stay tight with that and use our data and use our data better so that we can measure how we're doing along the way. But we're committed and so, it's that belief. We're going to write this course. We're going to come out of turnaround and our kids, we're going to be one of those celebrations. That's what's going to happen at Adams.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Could you quickly introduce which staff members out here with you?
Absolutely, and thank you for that opportunity. My staff members, lovely staff members.
Ms. Johnson is a special education teacher. Ms. Fleming is our counselor. Ms. King is our assistant principal. Ms. Boucher is our community liaison. And Mr. Kohler is our art teacher.
Okay, and all of you have to be in your schools early tomorrow morning.
Yes.
I appreciate your kids, I mean, I appreciate all of you being here.
We're the earliest starting school.
So, I'll start off by saying, thank you for sharing this report with us. And this is nothing new that I'm saying to you. This is year zero from what CDE. But next year, if you continue to remain here, then the accountability clock truly starts. And then, to get off that accountability clock is a lot more difficult than if you can do it this year. I have seen schools having 30 or 35 SPF and then the next year move up to 55 and completely out of it. So, this is possible. It's going to take a team effort out there, starting with you, Principal Slider. And how long have you been there?
I'm in my third year at Adams this year.
So, you kind of stepped in, in the middle of COVID, in the 2019 school year?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I think it was 2020. Yes.
Okay, so, okay. So, you've got a dedicated staff, that's why they are here. But the team has to come together right now and you said the sense of urgency. But the team has to come together right now, and you said the sense of urgency is there.
Yes.
And I know as a Title I school, you get additional funding for the Title Dollars. Now you get Empower Dollars and the board approved in the fund, was it Fund Balance or SR Money, wraparound services for your school, which includes, you know, we set quarter of a million dollars every year for an outside group to come and provide this wraparound services for your school out there. I just, my feedback to you is I hope you take advantage of this. And when we are investing all these resources, we do want some return on the investment, so to speak.
Yes.
Okay. And one other comment I will make, and then I'll, I do have a few questions too. While you were talking, I was looking at your school website. It's got some dated material there from summer bridge, via past summer, so maybe it's.
We need to update it.
Yeah, update that with more relevant material. We don't, I don't think we use ST Math anymore as a district.
You're right.
We still have ST Math links up there.
We will update that ASAP.
Yep. Board directors, comments or questions?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I will come to, is it Director Nelson?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. I will come to you in one minute after Director Jorgensen.
Thanks.
Thank you. I wanted to make it clear that no, we weren't leaving as a result. Director Nelson had to go relieve a babysitter, so she's online, Al's online, and Director Bankus wasn't feeling well, so she headed home, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Thank you for covering it.
We still have a core here and we're good.
Director Nelson actually drove Director Bankus home, so.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, I was, I want to make sure she's taken care of. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with the staff turnover, I mean, you mentioned it, right? Just the, the, how to bring everybody together.
Right.
And then mentioned working hard, and I think I mentioned it before, of there's a difference between working hard and working on the right hard.
Right.
Right? And having a timeline of, you know, okay, we're all, we're going to work hard, but I'm going to give you these top three things, like you kind of laid out here, of what the right hard is, right? And so I appreciate that. I would like to know just maybe a little bit more, you know, as your leader of your staff, like, are we doing things to bring that staff together outside the classroom? My favorite thing as being a teacher was, we had barbecues at people's houses, you know, we got together. And that's really what made it fun to teach, you know, with a, with a building. So are you doing those things like, you want these staff to be with you, and they are, as evidenced tonight?
Yes.
You know, maybe speak more to that for me, just because I think that's where you're going to capture them for the, for the right kind of hard.
Absolutely. And I totally respect that question because during our one-plan symposium, the team, their planning had a lot of discussion around, we need to, let's be very intentional about bringing the fun, bringing the team, building the team with those kind of activities like you just described. So yes, that's being, that's being very intentionally done to some degree. I'm like, I'm sorry, but I'm going to make you participate in this fun activity. But yes, and we're, kind of the great thing that's come out of that is we're using Kagan structures, and some of the, Kagan calls them like silly games and things, but they're structures that we're using with our staff to model and then say, hey, you might use this structure in your classroom. And so we're trying to be very intentional about that. The data's a little misleading here. What, this past year, our turnover, we did have some turnover, but it was not as impactful as years past. In fact, we really only had about two staff members leave at the end of last year, okay? Leave for other opportunities. A lot less turnover, which was great. That was really a positive sign of that team working together. Since the year started, we've had some turnover, including right now, you know, we don't have a TLC. Our TLC took another position, and so did my assistant principal, but thank you to Mr. Relic in making this happen. We have an amazing interim assistant, super interim assistant principal who has stepped in and just been rocking and rolling. So our turnover has been different this year, but very important what you brought up. Making sure we are coming together as a staff in that important way too. Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
Director Nelson?
I just wanted to reiterate what the DAC members, the feedback that they provided, and just that I would advise taking their comments very seriously. I echo a lot of the comments that they provided, just the things that I noticed in the plan. So just wanted to stress the importance of, I'm not going to repeat everything because they already provided it, but just that I wanted to stress what they've provided to you, so. And Sandra was able to drive herself home, so she's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what Director Nelson is referring to, maybe you can, David Colicky, Dr. Colicky would be able to provide the DAC accreditation feedback that we got for Adams. There was a lot of concerns that the data that you have in the USIP is not current, the STAR test results is not reflected out there, and some of these had a deadline of August and September, and those are not reflected if those actually took place. So anyway, you would have the comment out there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let Brian comment because that's consistent feedback as we get prepared for the second one. I want to acknowledge, Michelle, I've been at Adams, it's got a great feel. You all are moving in the right direction. We can't ignore what the Five Essentials is telling us. And so I came back in on the tail end of your conversation with Vice President Jorgensen, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of, you know, building team is hard, and building team under pressure is even harder. But, you know, having a clear vision as a leader and rallying people around that vision will get that upper right-hand corner of your Five Essentials that I put back up there in the right space. All, I find it interesting that in 2021, you had ambitious instruction without collaborative teachers. You know, there's a bit of a flip there that normally the way, and the reason that the Five Essentials is built this way, that the bullseye is normally the last to go green because it is the four corners that are required to get to a space where we know that we have ambitious, high-quality, best-first, first-tier instruction. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing there, and we see great things for you and at Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
What's your current enrollment number? You should know from last week, last week was.
Yes. Our current enrollment is right around 320 right now.
Okay. And that has dropped when you looked at some of the things by 100 students.
Yes, it has.
So there is, and you've got a brand-new building out there, one of our relatively newer buildings.
A beautiful building, yes.
So you've got a community, you've got a building, you know, and some of it, you've listened to other principals come here and present about North and how they built up.
Right.
And they have ambitious goals for what they want to do next year. And it's going to require, there was another principal that came here a month back and talked about their enrollment was less than 202 years later, now it's 276. You just have to, you know, go out into the community and engage and get the students there. Declining student enrollment, that's one of the charges that the superintendent have to turn that around.
And if I may, with a conversation with Superintendent Gaul, one of the things that we're working on is a virtual tour, because one of the things I had said to him, and you just mentioned, is about that amazing building that we have. And one of those hurdles, if we could just get people to come into the building, right? Come through the neighborhood and come into the building. So we met recently with Rex Garrison and with Paige, and we're working on marketing our school. And so part of that, Rex and his team come out on Friday, they're going to be filming that virtual tour that we're going to model like what they did at Jenkins and get our students involved in doing some of the voice-over communication on that, getting that front and center. And then we are really working on increasing our social media presence. And Paige gave us some really good tips around that. And we're excited because we have an active SAC and PTSCO right now. And we have a group of parents that have just jumped on board, and that is growing. And so we're working on those things, but I'm right there with you. The more we can get the community engaged, the higher our enrollment's going to go.
I've been at other schools too over the past couple of months, and there is a passion right now coming out of COVID for our community to re-engage in our schools and be a visible presence.
Yes.
So you have to invite them, maybe have a barbecue night or an arts night where kids are demonstrating their work, and parents would want to come and see their kids' artwork or band night or, you know, you got to.
Absolutely.
Do everything out there to try to engage our community.
Yes. And it just triggered in my memory, one of the things you shared, an example of how they want to come back. Our open house, we had 600 people come to open house. It was a great turnout, and it's just evidence of that. They want to be there, they want to be involved. We want to create those opportunities for them.
Maricela, can you take for a follow-up action item that when we get the student-led virtual tour complete, that we bring it to the board and share it as a three-minute experience?
Awesome. That'd be great.
That was an idea that came from walking the halls with principal. And we said, boy, wouldn't it be great if students were selling the experience here at Adams? And then thanks to Debra, who is rightfully off for a couple of days to celebrate her anniversary, so she's not here this evening.
That's why she's missing.
We put all our priority schools at the top of the heap for that in-house work for us to be able to do that production. It's a challenge that it's still in, you know, they're going to be there on Friday.
Yes.
But we're also having the conversations of, if this proves to be a viable tool and we see it well-received, maybe it's not something we need to be doing in-house where it takes us this long to get that completed. Maybe we pass an initiative that says, we let a contract for somebody for a couple, you know, $10,000, $20,000 to produce 10 or 15 virtual tours that are student-led, and we get that knocked out and we move forward. You know, we have to stop thinking that we are the mayor of the District 11 and start realizing that we are in the business of providing the most audacious opportunity for our students. And sometimes that will mean that we can't just stack up cordwood on what else we need to do inside to get it done.
Director Daniels?
Oh, you're sorry. No, you're good. I just wanted to add to what you were saying when I came to visit the TLC, that you did not have one. And, and the other notice was the STEM, there's no STEM instructor at Adams. And that was a very big loss for you all. And also the, the support of having the additional funds to make some of those positions full-time, there's a little concern if that's going to shift again. And they're like, ugh, we so need the support, how is that going to work? So those were the things that were shared with me. And I do know your staff is working hard. The other part about your demographics is it requires a lot of love. And it takes a lot of internal, like, support to, to heavy lift because of those, those needs that are sometimes not even really your fault. But the environment is conducive to a lot of, and it's stressful. But I appreciate the fact that you all are providing for them, even though it can't be seen just yet in certain areas. But it is making a difference, no matter how many times someone tries to tell you, do it this way, flip it up, rub it down, do all this stuff, right? You know, there's still a dimension of, it's not what's taught all the time, but what's caught. So thank you for helping them.
Thank you.
Thank, no, thank you for helping. I'm going to take it as my community. Thank you for helping my community and being available for the needs that are always seen.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
And thank you, Director Daniels, because I, as I speak for my staff, who I know a lot of them are listening tonight too and here, that means a lot to them hearing you say that. Thank you.
I, I, I just want to let you know that there, it, it is, when you've never been in these situations and you have to step in and begin the heavy lift because the can has been kicked down the road for so long, many people don't understand, this buildup, again, has been there. And now you finally have a group of people that are willing to step, I mean, it's taken a cycle to get people willing to step into it without the trying to rule over, trying to tell you who you ought to be.
Yeah.
What you think you should do, and blah, 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 blah. But allow for new, the, the, the opportunity to sometimes just hold the child when they're crying. I mean, you know?
Yep.
That wasn't a part of the process for a very long time, but now we're starting to get there.
But it's real life.
But it's, exactly. So we have real-life scenarios, which were always there, but we can no longer ignore them and pretend like we could just hide it under a bushel and act as if you're just going to do what I say, as I say it, and blah, 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 blah. So I, the industry is working to shift. It's a heavy lift, heavy lift. But I do appreciate you getting up early in the morning to be there.
Thank you.
Even though there are people screaming and hollering about what, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Thank you, Director Daniels.
Thank you.
So Director Daniels makes some good points, and there is a concern about, this is not nothing new, there is a concern about in a couple of years, certain fundings that are federally funded through COVID dollars may run out, and we may not have the dollars to sustain some of the supports that we have. But my promise to you, and Superintendent Gaul will echo this, if you demonstrate the results, we will find the money that Superintendent Gaul's and the board's responsibility to provide the same level of supports that you have now or even more.
Okay.
Okay? It's, and there is no denying that, okay? We need to see at the end of it that we do right by our students.
Absolutely.
Okay? That these students are able to academically and socially, emotionally, the whole child needs are being met. Okay?
Right.
And you have the full support of the board, you have the resources, you have, that's why the board allocated quarter of a million dollars this year to bring direct support into your school. I hope your staff are listening to it and take advantage of this opportunity. And at the end of the year, come and share your success stories with us. We will be there proudly to walk with you out there, and we are interested in listening to that video that Superintendent Gaul talked about.
Yes.
Okay.
And we look forward to that, sharing that with you.
Yeah, and possibly the other thing that we talked about was that feedback from the DAC that came back. Incorporate that.
We'll work on that.
I'm assuming you will be back here when the item is an action item in December or January.
We'll bring all the principals back for that evening.
Yeah, all the principals back there. Provide us an update at that time, a mid-year update as to where your school is, you have beginning of the school year data from STAR Acadiums. Let's have a middle-of-the-year, you know, where you are, how you moved the needle from where you started to where you are right now.
Okay.
Where you were at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate each and every one of your staff staying in here, the staff that are listening to. You guys are doing some amazing work out there with the challenging environment that you find yourself in. Truly appreciate from the bottom of my heart as a parent, your work is recognized. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you, Adam's staff and Mrs. Slidder. And just to reiterate, we do have the DAC accreditation feedback, and we'll be working that. Thanks to Dr. Colicky and their team. Okay. Mr. Brandt, you want to make your way up, sir, please? He is obviously the principal at Columbia. Maricela, thanks for getting that queued up.
Good evening, everybody that's here.
I think you don't have any of your staff with you out there, or do you?
It is all me. Going solo. It's a little late. So thank you for having me to kind of share out the good work that we're doing and we're taking on. I know it's late, so I'm going to try and get through as quick as I can. I was excited earlier to hear about the U-Dip and the priorities that they're bringing forth. It aligns exactly with what you'll see at the end of the presentation. So it's exciting to know that we will be alongside some of the district efforts and kind of using and borrowing some of their ideas. Columbia is a strong, small school that has a very family feel. We thrive on multi-generations having attended Columbia. We currently have a student that grandparents attended. Many of our staff live in the community. We're in kind of that immediate downtown area if it's outside of our boundaries. Many of our staff are really connected and tied to Columbia and moving it forward in a positive way. We have a lot of partnerships, one through early connections, daycare, that brings in about 45, 30 to 45 students every year from out of district. That brings in about forty-five, thirty to forty-five students every year from out of district generally. So that is a, a strong strength for us and just kind of having a strong enrollment. As we move through this process, looking at our, our North Star, I'm going to give a little peek and shout out to the strategic purpose that we were able to go through earlier this school year. It was a multi-day process and what we came up with is, is what we have on the first slide there. And Columbia, at, at this point, we're moving forward with the arts integration. And the strategic purpose that we came up with was we're an arts-integrated school. Columbia will purposes to engage learners in a connected and empowered community where critical thinking, curiosity and wonder are nurtured through inquiry and arts for all. So the North Star really will be looking at academics through an arts-integrated lens. That is going to be a priority for us. So looking at our data, we've three years of emergent, I'm sorry, five essentials. And all three years, we were partially organized. You can see that there's just kind of a shift and a mix in all three years. And as a whole, we were partially organized in all three years. So going from a couple of green in two thousand twenty to having a red in two thousand twenty-one to being more in the middle range for all areas in two thousand twenty-two. We had seventy-four percent of teachers take it and we had forty-five percent of our parents and community members take it. So we, we had a lot of response from our community, which we're proud of and excited to have. The ADB, if you look at the grades three through five, those that met or exceeded growth from the last couple of years, we have similar results positively for ELA. We had some growth from last year to this year by four points, but in math, we reduced by several percentage points. As we look at the Acadian stibbles, looking over the last couple of years, again, some, some growth, not significant, not what we've historically had. And so, you know, positively, two points to one point. But if you look at the grade levels, there are some certain grades that stick out as far as growing and others not growing as much as we had expected. First and third did not show growth. And so those are areas that we wanted to pay particular attention to as we move forward and looking at specific supports and interventions. For our literacy, the mean standard scores for CMAAS, looking at historical data. So if you look at the two thousand nineteen, that matches the previous three to five years prior to COVID. So the years leading up to two thousand nineteen, we had very strong scores and, and data in the double digits. In two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, we did see a decrease in our overall growth and academic achievement scores. The overall performance levels, we have thirty-nine percent that is meets and exceeds. And a concerning area for us is the twenty-seven percent at level one. That really stuck out to myself and our staff as, as an area that we really need to focus on and address. But trying to celebrate the positives of the meets and exceeds on the other end. Looking at our math, over the course of the last three years on CMAAS, again, seeing two thousand nineteen being similar to the growth and achievement that we had the several years prior to the pandemic versus what we're seeing after the pandemic in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. We, we are not seeing the results or having the results that, that we had prior to the pandemic, which is highly concerning to myself and the staff. Again, math, we fared better with our student percentages that had met or exceeded on CMAAS versus not as large of a deficit area on the level one identified students. For our SPF, we are at a forty-one. The cutoff for improvement is forty-two, so we're just kind of right there. So I think with some very targeted, focused next steps and supports, we are expecting that we'll, we'll move off of this very quickly and, and make some progress and be able to make those necessary adjustments through the action steps that, that I'll be sharing in a few minutes. So as a whole, we had a very strong growth and achievement prior to the pandemic. This current year, we are low in both ELA and math and growth and achievement. And so we really need to make sure that we are focused on common alignment. That's, that's kind of our belief is that we haven't had the ability to be in common alignment for a focused instructional practices within our whole school. So we're really working to increase that to grow students above grade level and meet and exceed the expectations. Our North Star is really tied to that arts integration. As we get into our major improvement strategy one, we're viewing that the, the best first instruction is our priority one, which aligns with what was shared earlier tonight. We're seeing that a lack of instructional focus across all of Columbia on tier one instruction. We've always historically had a very strong tier two. We are really working to make sure that that tier one BFI, best first instruction, is a priority for this year as we move forward, particularly as we get into our arts integration next year and integrating both the arts along with that best first instruction. The theory of action is when our school learns and implements arts integration and student growth conversations focused on engagement, the identified challenges will be addressed. So we really believe that the two of those hand-in-hand integrated will start seeing the positive change and the positive pendulum swing for student growth and achievement. Some of the action steps that we are going to take, arts integration strategy will be shared out this year. So this year is a year zero for our arts integration. Next year is our official first year, so we're going to get a lot of PD come next year. But we want to make sure that we're moving forward and moving that pendulum towards that as we move through this year. In past, we, last year, we, there's a cohort supported through the District Eleven that Columbia had eleven teachers participate in that was all around arts integration. So we have a lot of teachers in the building that have had some training and professional development. But coming into next year, we're going to get five full days. So it's going to be very intense and very thorough and it will provide some of that alignment that we are all getting the same information and being able to move forward with that. So in the meantime, we're starting to use some of the expertise that we have in-house to grow some of the knowledge for some of our newer staff. And because we do have a fair amount of newer staff, we have forty-eight percent of our staff are probationary. So generally that means within their first three years of teaching. And fifty-two percent of our certified staff are non-probationary. So we're split between having some veteran folks as well as a significant amount of newer staff at Columbia. The instructional leadership team, that is new this year. We are using that to help, again, get us grounded in very strong instructional practices while also looking ahead to the arts integration. We have the facilitator, arts facilitator, Jen Lennon. She's been asked and invited to come and she's coming to our ILT meetings to help, again, start that process this year, get some grounding, get some work going, so that way we're more prepared and ready to jump in quicker and faster next year after we get the very intensive professional development. Staff are going to be sharing out some of the engagement strategies that they have, that they're using as, in their own classrooms to other staff at our staff meetings. So trying to build from kind of the internal experts and bringing that to our ongoing learning perspective that, that we're building and maintaining at Columbia. Staff will collectively complete the Schoology course, the best first instruction course. We've, we've also completed the, the first module. We're going to be doing the second one on Monday as well. So we are, we are working through that collaboratively and collectively as a whole school on, on the same timeframe. So we're moving forward in a, in a positive way and getting that just base common understanding for us as a school and moving forward and kind of being able to take that learning and implement it in the classrooms. Tied to our number of new teachers, worked with professional development and the induction and teachers coaching teachers and created a new co-horted model this year. And two staff are coming to Columbia to work with about six of the new staff that we have. And it's an onsite training once a month, so getting kind of the best of both worlds from the mentoring and the teachers coaching teachers to help provide that support, ongoing support, best practices in the classroom. That's going to be tied to helping them grow and hopefully also add to the, the retention. So knowing that teachers are hard to come by, trying to make sure that it's, they're getting the support and knowledge to help kind of connect with one another and build a positive culture for the new staff that we have. Staff. Columbia's, so I'm sorry, last bullet is the classroom walks. So I worked with Donnell Potter and working on creating an effective classroom walk forum to, again, kind of have that thirty-thousand-foot view and find just the general themes of what we're doing and what we need to get better at as a whole school. And so it's not evaluative, but really working to have that data as an ongoing basis for myself and a couple of other folks in the building that would be going through the classes to capture that data and then share it to the instructional leadership team for them to be able to mull over and come up with some professional development and then bring that back to staff meetings and PD days so that we can grow and get better. For our major improvement strategy two, it's about building trust in that family engagement. And we have low family, community participation. During our one plan, we had several family or parents there. We had three to four parents, all of whom very fortunate were in some form a teacher of some sort and one was an instructional coach. So, you know, they had their hat lens on, but they also, I'm sorry, they had their parent lens on and they also had a very instructional background as well to deepen our conversation. And they, as parents, really voiced that we need to get better at bringing them in. I think coming out of COVID, that was, you know, one of the, the needs that they sought and they, they greatly missed having that opportunity. But having them be a part of our one-plan plot process, I think, was just very beneficial for us as a school to get that perspective to incorporate it into our second improvement strategy. And so when our school team provides and distributes frequent communication tools that include volunteer opportunities, the identified challenges will be addressed. So really trying to meet parents where they're at. So I was really excited to hear about what was brought up earlier and just learning from some of the research-based strategies that the district's talking about. Those are things that I'm going to try and steal and, and bring in and lean in heavily on and, and make sure that that becomes a part of some of our opportunities within our school. One of the kind of big feedback was from parents from, you know, we did get a lot of heavy participation rate on the five, I'm sorry, yes, five E. And so we have parents responding and have a heavy response, but they're not seeing and feeling that connection and that engagement from us. And so those are things that we need to, to be working on and addressing. One of the big takeaways that we're moving forward with is weekly newsletters. So making sure that that's a requirement for all teachers and we're using the Loop Blackboard System and using that as a three-week, well, a monthly cycle essentially, three weeks, teachers are doing it from their perspective as the classroom. The fourth month, they're sending it to a, a school-wide newsletter. They send kind of the centralized one letter out for the whole school, but teachers are providing their, their, their portion of it. So families are getting school-wide information, they're getting classroom information and have already received some positive feedback from families and, and just feeling more connected and more in the know, both instructurally, volunteer opportunities, and just really maximizing that communication tool. We're also seeking out community members, volunteers. It's been amazing to see parents in the building this year. We, we've had lots of parents in several different grade levels. And as we continue to focus on this as our goal, I know we're going to find more and kind of creative ways to bring them in and non-traditional ways or ways that we don't readily come to or think of in, in kind of that day-to-day, what we just have typically done. So trying to think outside the box and come up with some exciting ways to bring in the, the families and, and parent community. The culture committee is also new, so trying to help build that culture for parents, for students, for staff. All of those are areas of need, so we have a, a committee that's working on those things. Wellness Wednesdays, traditions, so trying to build and, and kind of capture back some of those exciting things that kids love, that parents remember, that kids remember. So we want to make sure that we bring back some of those fun things, so that way they like it. They want to be at school and they're excited to be there. And, and that helps us engage with the kids, have positive relationships to really focus on the instruction after we have built that strong relationship. We're going to continue to enhance our parent-teacher communication organization through the five E and really continue to work on community partnerships. We, we want to, as we go into the arts integration, we're going to really target and look for building additional community supports for that integration and arts work. Looking at a lot of our parent community that lives downtown, really value and appreciate the arts. So pulling in their expertise and their passions into what we're doing and moving our school forward. And then as we move forward, yeah, just continuing to, to make sure that we're connected with the arts. How we're going to do it, for MIS one, we are working to make sure that we have a structured and consistent process for our PLCs. Making sure that they're already in place, they're meeting by weekly, but really kind of dial in and get the standards and hone in on what the expectation is and make sure that it's consistent throughout all grade levels and make sure that we are all doing very similar practices with, within each grade-level departments, supported by the TLC, by myself. And then also the instructional leadership team will be having a focus on that and making sure that that's a priority and, and kind of having that accountability piece of, are we using the note catcher and addressing the needs that should be addressed during that PLC carved-out time? On the staff meeting agendas, we, we've kind of put our priorities on there. So for our ILT and for our staff meetings and for BLT, kind of making that a priority. Have hung up our MIS ones and twos and our library where we typically meet, it's up in the staff lounge, it's in my office. And so just putting all of those focuses at the forefront of our day-to-day work and making sure that we're constantly coming back and making sure that that's at the work, focus of the work that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. We're also ensuring that staff provide adequate time for monitoring and completing that Schoology course. We've collaboratively figured out how we're going to do that. Second session will be on Monday and then we have three more sessions, the remainder of the first semester. Certified classroom teachers will attend and participate in that Columbia Cafe. So that's the, the mentoring support program, so for them, having that additional support. Again, once a month, there's a lot on their plate. And so we're hearing that, that they have a lot of things that they're trying to manage and juggle. So once a month, can be very supportive, have expertise coming in, providing that for them while also giving them that communal time to learn from each other as new teachers and, and build that connection and, and community support. For MIS two, looking at what we're going to do to deliver, we're going to continue those messages through Blackboard weekly from teachers and then that monthly from the school. Make sure that we're following up on that and making sure that, kind of working through, how do we kind of make sure that we are getting that data to drive, is a hundred percent of our teachers doing it? And that's a priority is, is making sure that all, everybody is doing it, so that way we can, as a communal, make sure that no parents, no families are lost from one classroom or another and have that consistent practice throughout the school. Using surveys and forms, so another practice that's been started this year is I've been trying to call home and write letters home as the principal, but getting that feedback from teachers. And so when I communicate with parents, kind of it's, it's a double win. It's a, I was talking to a, your classroom teacher and Johnny has, you know, is doing this awesome thing and wanted to share that with you. And so making sure that families are getting connection and, and contact that way and, and positive ways. Unlike the, you know, typical principal call that's not always so positive. Trying to make sure we're proactive and having that positive connection with them. And relying on staff to help provide some of those good things that are happening in the classroom. Also tracking the volunteers and, and we, using the systems in place, the, the check-in system, we're able to do that pretty quickly and pretty easily, but still have a data point to kind of have a baseline so that as we move forward next year, another year out of COVID, we can start using this year as, as the model and the baseline to grow and make sure that we keep getting better. And then in future months, we're going to continue that arts integration work. So that way we continue to just educate families, remind them that this is coming, again, start working on some of the excitement and energy and, and get them connected and kind of brought into the work that we need to be doing as we move forward into next year's year one, which is going to be really heavy and really exciting. Central supports that we have, the one plan, it, it was kind of the, the start of all of this, even though it's not, you know, really kind of officially part of it, but the one-plan process really starts the work that we come into this year. really starts the work that we come into this year, not knowing what our CMS SPF score was gonna be, but that's the starting point. And we had a really robust team with those three or four parents that all had educational backgrounds as well as three or four teachers. And so we really had a great two-day process and came up with some goals that we are constantly gonna be revisiting and I know the DAC's gonna have some recommendations and so we'll make those as we come. But we had an exceptional core group of people that are champions of Columbia and that really want to see us succeed. And so that one plan process really was the first step, but continuing that work with the quarterly one plan reviews, my bi-weekly meetings with my area superintendent, Brian Relic, and continuing to have the instructional leadership team with Jen Lennon, the instructional arts coach from the district, have her be a part of that as a resource for myself, but also the instructional leadership team to continue to grow that and make sure that that's a priority for any new instructional focus that we have, just to have that lens as we're making those changes in progress throughout the course of the school year. And as I mentioned, I've already connected with Donnell Potter and Jen Lennon's been a support already with some arts integration. So we have several areas that we've already established relationship with, they're checking in, coming over, doing walkthroughs, willing to sport, have those conversations. And so we've been very blessed with a lot of support from central office folks to help make our work move forward and have that reflective process of what's working and what do we need to get better with. And then the future work, we'll just continue to dive into that A-plus arts integration and that's the five days next year. And I'm gonna be going to North Carolina next week to do kind of that formalized application process, so that work's already happening this year, but the instructional meats and potatoes isn't really gonna start until next summer when we have that five days instructional. All right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Director Nelson, I know you had a question. Do you want to go first?
Sure. Couple of comments. I noticed in your USIP that you speak to having vocal and negative parents. And I gotta say, I think we could reword that. I mean, if there are people who are unhappy, then we need to find some middle ground and find out how we can turn it around. So that just kind of hit me wrong with that verbiage of calling out vocal and negative parents. I realize maybe there's some obstacles there and so I'm not trying to belittle the challenges you're facing, but it kind of sounds like an excuse almost. So that would just be one piece of advice that update that language of how we can just rise above and improve that situation. And then I do love the concept of a vertical PLC. Maybe that is happening at our other schools, but I don't remember seeing it in previous USIPs, so I'm excited. I think that sounds like a great opportunity to improve the school. And then I noticed that your subgroups seem to be doing really well, that in a couple different places, second grade, there was no gaps in subgroups. And then I think on page 16, there was another place where it said there was no noticeable gaps in other grade levels as well. So congrats on that, that's exciting. And that's all I have.
Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for the feedback and yes, the language in the one plan, we can definitely look at wordsmithing that and making that a more positive message. But again, some of that was the dialogue that we had from the parent community during the one plan, but I agree that ought to be looked at, so we'll definitely take a look at that.
So I want to just reiterate Director Nelson's comment, it's not the language, it's the way we have received the interaction. So yes, we can correct the language, but the conditions are ripe and have been ripe at Columbia to be a high-performing school. So we have to acknowledge that feedback from our constituents, remember, our number one customer is the student, however, most elementary students have not quite figured out how to articulate their satisfaction or dissatisfaction. And so it will come to us directly by the parent and particularly in the community of which Columbia sits, in this spine of the city, you will get very direct and very pointed feedback from your parents. Find in a way that that is never seen as an obstacle, but always as an opportunity, will be the thing that gets Columbia from, conditions are ripe to look at how we reap those rewards. Anytime it's us versus them, we will be on the short end of that stick.
I couldn't have said that better, you're spot on on that. And that's a concern to me. When you go back and look, the conditions being ripe at Columbia, when you go back and look at your SPF in 2017, 18, and 19 and looking at the data, it's 63.5, 91.2, 82.5, and you were trending up there, one of the best schools in District 11, and now you've fallen off the cliff out there. And in response to that, the community is going to be vocal and unhappy about the situation and that should not be construed as negative. Director Chergens.
Yeah. The one thing with the Schoology, I don't know if that really belongs in your USIP as that's something that every school's doing. So if that's an action item or not, I mean, every school's doing that, so I don't know if that's gonna be the thing that's gonna, you know, be an actionable step for you to come out of this, your zero piece. I feel like there's something not told here in all of this. And I'll just be candid and ask you what that is.
Sure. You know, a couple other variables that don't come out in the data. This is my fourth year, first year we were titled, second year not titled, third year titled, this year we're not titled. So I think that's a factor. I think the staff and that 48% being probationary and the 52% being non-probationary, that absolutely, you know, having a lot of new staff, they bring energy and excitement, but there's a lot of getting us cohesive and having that collective focus of where are we heading? I think the arts integration is, has been a part of Columbia before I started. There were three or four staff members when I joined my first year that were already excited about it, so that has sustained. We got surveys and we got all staff kind of bought in. We had 98% last year say that they were ready to dive into arts integration. So we had a very strong response to yes, this is what we think is best for Columbia. And so it's really kind of coming out of COVID to get us going in that work. And for me, we can't get going fast enough, you know, this is year zero, so how do we do that? And that's through some of the action steps of trying to layer it into what we have this year, to know that five days over the summer is gonna be just, it's gonna put a lot on our plate, but in a good way and give us some of the tools that we need to be able to move forward.
Yeah, we can look forward to the five days of summer, but we have to be doing things this year, right? Tell me about, I know you mentioned the, you know, positive phone calls home, but how are we, I didn't see any discipline data, where are you at with that? And student, student discipline?
So this year compared to past years, last spring, there was a significant amount of discipline that happened. This year, we've really, we've, last year, we worked on the PBIS, we're relaunching that as well, making that a priority, created a whole new system for that. We've talked about the culture committee is another way to address that overall school positivity for students, bringing in some of those kind of more fun, I want to be at school types of activities. And so those are ways that we're working to address some of that.
Okay. Yeah, and to piggyback on that, the teacher-principal trust in your five E, you know, up a little bit, your lowest area there, you know, just concerns about staff being with you and, you know, having a little bit of turnover in your building recently, just making sure that you're gonna be the leader, that you need to be there for that staff. That's my concern.
Yep, absolutely. And, you know, the four classroom teachers that left, two retired, one moved out of state and the other one is doing an intervention position. So but outside of that, we have more than just those four this past year. So yes, absolutely, trying to kind of, the feedback for Adams was how do we collectively come together? That's where the culture committee and me as a leader, absolutely, but how do we as a whole school kind of chip in and kind of find those ways to connect and make it a more positive environment for everybody?
Okay, good. Yeah, last piece, the new staff, you know, 48%, I think that that can be an asset with the right leadership. You know, energy and all that, you know, we've, I've spoke numerous times, not at Columbia, but other schools where we've lost really good probationary staff to non-probationary staff only because they were probationary. So we have, we have the energy and to channel and to give them the things they need to serve well.
And that's that monthly for the new teachers, that cohort, Columbia Cafe, really trying to support them, get them the tools, kind of build that community amongst that new group that was very intentional at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. All right, I think that's, that's it for me. Make sure you're, make sure you're leading and supporting your staff.
No, no questions? Okay. The same thing as before, I'm assuming you're going to be back in December and when you come back, provide us an update at that point in time. One concern I do have is that you are trying to come out of this priority, priority improvement status now while also trying to be an arts integration school. Is that something that is going to overload your staff as far as the responsibilities that they need to be doing at the same time? But I leave it up to the professionals and Ms. Asavado to help you through that and maybe this is the motivation that you guys need.
I think it's gonna bring us together.
Yeah, bring us together to get the thing done too. So we look forward to getting you back in December and at that point, give us an update where you guys are. And again, as I ended with the last one, what's your enrollment?
Two ninety-five.
What was it last year?
Two fifty-one, I believe.
So you've added 40 students this year?
So, sorry, I should probably say, I think last year with, trying to get accurate numbers with or without preschool, kind of in the means I have, so I probably need to compare apples to apples, two ninety-five now to about two seventy-five last year, including preschool.
It's still, you added 20 students. Good. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Yep. And the same as before, look at the DAC feedback too, and they've done some, put in a lot of work into this and try to incorporate those feedback. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a motion to table this item? Okay. Yep. And we are tabling it to December, do we have a date? Is it, Dr. Colicky, what's the date you mentioned that this is going to come as an action item?
December 4th.
December 4th? December 4th would not be a board meeting. Would not be a, yeah, it would be a work session. Okay. December 14th is a Wednesday? Okay. So is it December 14th? Okay, sounds good. Yeah. Make a motion to table this till December, as an action item for December 14th.
Before you do that, the note here is January.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we table this item until the December 14th board meeting as an action item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Just a point, so you said table this.
This item.
This item. So this item, just for the record, contains both unified proof of plan.
Thank you. To clarify, this item is number seven and includes two schools, both Adams and Columbia, for the, for record on the motion.
Second, thank you.
Moved and seconded, do you want to discuss anything about this? Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Daniels?
Hi.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ahn?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so both these schools will return as an action item in December 14th board meeting. Moving on, future agenda items request.
I have a couple.
Yeah, Director Daniels is first.
Yes, thank you. Superintendent Gaul, I was just curious if we could find a conversation around what, I was just thinking about our band music program and we have some instruments that need to be like replaced or fixed. I have a parent that's welding together like a bass for, I think it's the xylophones to stand on, and I wasn't sure what the history is for our music program, if there's something for that, or is it just about fundraising separately outside of the school budget and them supplying what they need in that regards?
We could provide an update, would you like that in a work session or just over email?
Yeah, work session could be good, email, I'm easy, I just wanted to know what that looks like.
And I'm just adding some context to it. If I remember right, and some of the board members can chime in too, the board allocated some amount of money in last year mid-year budget, I think, to go, it was $250,000 or something, Ms., is it McDaniel's, who's the?
Yes. Marley McDaniel's, who presented last week.
She, she would have an idea and when she came to the board, the request was this was going to be used to update our band instruments and also repair them. So I don't know where that money is, maybe that could be part of the update, how that money was used. Okay. Director Nelson? Oh, yes. Do you want the thumbs, do you want this as an email or as a work session? What would, what are your preferences?
I think an email, I think I'm answering some questions and if the board wants further action, we'll make sure we have budget priority for it next year.
Okay. Okay, email is good. Okay, good. Director Nelson?
On the DAC charge, it stated that we do, that the board holds two joint work sessions. And so I just wanted to get that on our radar, that we should probably get that scheduled. I don't know if it would be one in the fall and one in the spring or what that would look like, but I don't believe we've discussed scheduling that. So want to put that out there. Secondly, I would like to request a work session or brainstorm session for the board over our policies. I know that there's gonna be some work done and since the board owns policy, I think that maybe we could provide some guidance on, to the committee of anything that we would like them to focus on initially. And then I also was wondering, I vaguely remember this past spring, us talking about doing a town hall in the fall. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe we were only gonna do one a year, but again, if that was a commitment that we made to doing one in the fall and one in the spring, then getting that on the schedule, which I realize our dates are quickly running out. And that's all I had.
Okay, let me address one at a time. The town hall, if I remember right, what was put in there is at least one. So we will try to see, and I know that we had one last spring around March or April, around that timeframe, April, I think, and that was well-received in the feedback that we got and.
So I've tasked the staff to put together a series of town halls for myself and I'd be, Deborah's not here to give me the dates, but we would be happy to share one or give one that is already draft on the books to the board to accelerate.
Perfect.
So I'll send that to the board over email for you to give feedback on what works.
It could be on a day that's different than a Wednesday and it's not.
Are you busy on Wednesday?
Yeah, I think we go till 10:30, 10:45. It could, and board members who are available can attend, it doesn't need to be all board members, or if you are attending, if you have several town halls, then maybe one or two board members can join you at each one of those town halls.
Great, I'll send the schedule for comment and we can then decide if we need to bring that to a work session. But we'll take that over emails and action for me to deliver that draft schedule.
Okay, and then your request for policy, it's actually coming up next work session. It's scheduled as Dr. X is putting together a new process where the policy. where the policy committee is going to be reviewing policies in a different set of order. And he wanted to come and share this with the board, so that would be a good opportunity. And he also mentioned that there are certain policies that according to him is required by law or highly recommended by CASB that are currently missing in the district portfolio of policies. So he's going to highlight some of those policies that are missing and bring it to that conversation at the boardwork session next week. And that would be a good opportunity for the board to provide some feedback and on the process itself. And if you have specific concerns or specific priority policies that board collectively would like to address, that would be a good opportunity. Did that answer your question, Director Nelson?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. And you, the last one you asked was the DAC, the, yeah, meeting with the DAC. Usually that's happened in the, you know, January, February window and then one at the end of the year. And sometimes it just comes as a report in front of the board. The mid-year budget process, after that, the budget subcommittee meets with the board to provide their feedback. And then at the end of the year, the DAC, the interior DAC meets with us. But we can make that a priority and DAC, and board members are also welcome to attend any of the DAC meetings. That gives an opportunity to see the DAC perform. But I will look into the calendar and see, since it's already a requirement that we have made that commitment as part of the DAC charge, I will look and see when that can be scheduled. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Did I, did I address everything that you brought? Okay, calendar review. So we have October 19th next week, which is a work session. Superintendent Gall, you may not be present in person for that work session.
That's correct. Myself, Chief Academic Officer Acevedo, Area Superintendent Dr. Comfort and Nicole Ottmeyer will be at the council grade city schools.
Okay, so.
I will join remotely.
Yeah, you will join remotely. So what we have is a lot of topics that are going to fall under Chief Bailey's department, I think. Family and medical leave insurance, educator effectiveness, staffing update, policy review process, which is what Greg X is going, Dr. X is going to come and talk to us about. And we put this tentatively CASB delegate assembly. This was the resolutions that are going to be there at the delegate assembly. To get some feedback from you, Director Ott, how has that process worked in the past since you? I don't think it's been scheduled in a work session. Do you want the list of policy, list of resolutions to come in to the board in terms of an email? And then if the board has any feedback, they can provide through email? Or how has that worked in the past? Because I can't remember it being in a work session.
Generally, the policy, the decisions of the delegate are reflective of board policy and legislative agenda. And so the direction is taken from that. If the delegate has any question about any of the particular policies, yes, we absolutely should bring those back and just get a feel from the board on how the delegate would vote.
Okay. So. Go ahead.
So what I'm doing, I'm actually crafting an email right now. I'll send out the fall assembly handout that has all the resolutions and all that. If you haven't looked at it yet, email me directly for feedback. And then if there are any that we have a number of controversial pieces on or maybe a number of, you know, mixed feedback on, then we can allocate some time to discuss just those items since there are 31 different resolutions to read through. So for sake of time.
Yep.
We'll do that first as a legwork and then if there's, you know.
So if you can just send an email to the board.
It's right now.
By tomorrow, send an email to the board and we can add it as an other agenda item to the work session next week if necessary. Okay. I think we are in. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Roll call, please, Marcella.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are officially adjourned at 10:50 PM.